Okay, this regular board meeting of the, sorry about that, of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really just want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set polls, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. And I just want to ask you right now if you would please just turn off your phones to silent. And we really do appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube. El lunes después, la conferencia. En esta página puede escoger su idioma, y así toda la información que fue descargada es disponible para todos. Por favor, de apagar su teléfono celular, les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. Okay, and we have, going on to item number two. We have, actually, we haven't done our moment of silence. So let's just take a moment of silence right now for prayer, contemplation, reflection. Thank you. We are moving on to Agenda Item Two, Public Comments. We have had one person sign up to speak. The Board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with Board procedures will do so accordance with the law, Board policy, and rules. Board rules require that each speaker comment pertain to an open meeting agenda item unless adjusted by presiding officer. Comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes per the time limit from the district's BED local. And I'll just ask Board Secretary, Mr. Davis, to be our timekeeper. And Mr. Davis, please let the patron addressing the Board know when they have one minute left. And I believe that we do it via the overhead, so you'll know when you have one minute left and when they've reached the end of their allotted time to speak. At this time, we have Mary Jane Waits, who's signed up to speak to Agenda Item Eight.
Good evening, everyone. This is Cordovae, trustee, and Dr. Kincanon. I'm Mary Jane Waits, and I am the Regional Membership Specialist for Association of Texas Professional Educators right here in the Region 12 District. On behalf of the nearly 350 ATPE members here in Waco ISD, I want to express ATPE support for Agenda Item Eight, for which authorizes the district to offer $2,500 sign-on bonuses to nurses and $5,000 sign-on bonuses to certified teachers, counselors, librarians, library media specialists, and police officers. We appreciate that the district is seeking well-qualified professionals to fill these key shortages in our area of the district. We're hopeful that these sign-on bonuses will alleviate the shortages and reduce the pressures of the current staff. We thank you, the Board and the Administration, for all your continued efforts to support Waco ISD's employees. And as always, ATP is available to serve as a resource to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waits. And I accidentally skipped a little bit of that. And so we're going to go on to, we've done the moment of silence, but we're going to go on to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Dr. Kincanon. Tonight, our pledge leaders are here from Bells Hill Elementary. Each month, we select two students to lead the pledge of allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. And tonight, we have with us Noah Bonuelos and Margarita Mendez Hernandez from Bells Hill. Noah is in the third grade, and his favorite subject is math because finding the answer is like solving mysteries. He loves playing with his brother and wants to be a gamer when he grows up. Thank you to Noah's mother, Stephanie Bonuelos, for being here tonight and sharing your incredible son with us. Margarita is in the second grade, and her favorite subject is also math. She enjoys learning about fractions. She loves to play with her sister and watch TV. And when she grows up, she wants to be the president, like George Washington, and she wants to give speeches like Martin Luther King. Thank you to Margarita's mother, Anna Hernandez, and her father, Jose Mendez, for being here and sharing your amazing daughter with us. And thank you to Principal McCall for being here and sharing your wonderful students with us tonight. Next, we have our U.S. Army Cadet Hero of the Battlefield. Lawrence Dubose is a third-year cadet in the University High School Junior R2C program, and he is currently in the Bravo Company Commander. He is an active student taking dual-credit and AP courses. Cadet Dubose is on the Student Council, a member of the No Place for Hate Club, and an athlete on the track team. When he's not busy with school, Dubose spends his time by volunteering with countless community and school service projects. He is a visionary who works for ways to improve the battalion, and his efforts and creativity have increased the efficiency and effectiveness of the Trojan Battalion. Cadet Dubose was nominated for this award by First Sergeant Leonard Montalongo, who's here tonight, and was chosen to be the recipient in recognition of the U.S. Army Major General Antonio V. Munera. It is a great honor for a commanding general to write a letter in recognition to a high school student cadet, and I would like to share the letter with you tonight. Dear Cadet Dubose, thank you for your unwavering commitment to excellence as a member of the U.S. Army Cadet Command Fifth Brigade and University High Junior ROTC program. You truly embody the Army values. Volunteering at community and school events, maintaining your academic studies, walking three miles to and from school to participate in extracurricular activities, and topping it all off with the creation of the online QR code promotion system is outstanding. You are an innovator, driven to serve, and a team player. Your extraordinary effort has earned you the distinction of being U.S. Army Cadet Command Hero of the Battlefield. I am proud to have you on the team and to call you one of our own. Leadership excellence. Congratulations. Next, we have our Gold Key Award winner, Maritza Degolado Ramirez, a Waco High senior. She's the first Waco ISD student to receive a Gold Key Award in the digital art category in advance to Nationals in the Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. She will find out if she is chosen to go to Nationals in New York on March 22. Maritza is a talented artist who has previously had three pieces of art go to the state base competition and recently advanced to the state trial competition in the courtroom artist category. When she's not busy working on art, Maritza serves as the historian of the Waco High School National Honor Society, historian of Upward Bound, member of the Interact Club, a Student Council member, an altar server at St. Francis Church, an art club member, student ambassador, and marketing manager of the Waco High School store. I don't know how she finds the time. She's also a dual-credit accelerate student who is on track to graduate this year with her associate's degree. That is extremely impressive, and congratulations on your achievement, Maritza. Next, we have our TASBO Purchasing Award of Merit. The Waco ISD purchasing department has earned the Texas Association of School Business Officials TASBO Purchasing Award of Merit each year since the award was established in 2009, and that's 15 years if you're counting. The TASBO Award for Merit of Purchasing Operations recognizes Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. For 2023, Waco ISD was among only 71 districts that met the stringent criteria to qualify for the award. This year's recipients were honored at an awards reception in San Antonio, Texas on February 15 during the TASBO Annual Conference. Congratulations for a job well done, and we appreciate all of your hard work and dedication. And next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 2022-2023 school year, leads from the heart, and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. February is Career and Technical Education Month, and it is fitting that the district has chosen to recognize Central Texas Ironworks. This organization has provided monetary funding for the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Committee Academy, GUAMA student projects, has supplied material goods such as welding materials and bolts, and hired GUAMA students after their high school graduation. The two gentlemen representing Central Texas Ironworks tonight, I have here Mr. Curtis Cleveland and Travis Fanning, have been involved for the last several years in supporting GUAMA by providing tours of their industrial facilities, working with students on mock interviews, and supporting the GUAMA Job Fair each year. Mr. Cleveland has continued to work as an executive committee member at GUAMA for the last 10 years during his employment with Central Texas Ironworks and while in retirement. While all of the industry partners working with GUAMA have greatly benefited our students and staff, Central Texas Ironworks exemplifies what it means to be a true excellent partner in the industry. And we are extremely appreciative of all that you do for our students and staff. Thank you. Standing in for Mr. Cleveland. And that concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
I know. Okay, that was fun. That was really fun. But we're going to move on to Item Number Five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kincanon.
All right, well, good evening. And it's hard to believe it's the end of February already. It's going by so quickly. And it is Black History Month, and so I want to visit a little bit about some of the activities across the district. And like we do every February, we've been celebrating the stories and voices of African-Americans, past and present. And we do this by providing engaging experiences that connect our students and families to the political, economic, social, and cultural impact of African-Americans. Walking through the halls of our campuses, you can see from the student work adorning the halls how these experiences have been incorporated each day into our classrooms in addition to the other special events planned in celebration of Black History Month. Parkdale Elementary kicked off the month hosting a steam night that involved fun, hands-on learning, activities in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Each activity had direct ties to discoveries, inventions, and contributions from key African-American scientists, engineers, and creators. Today, Hillcrest PDS hosted New York Times bestselling author Chris Barton, who is known for his award-winning biographies of prominent African-Americans. And Waco High School students had the opportunity to attend an advanced showing of the Student Council's program honoring former McLennan County Commissioner and civil rights leader Lester Gibson, along with several other community leaders. Also, as we gather here tonight, Crestview Elementary, Dean Highland Elementary, and Caesar Chavez Middle School are each hosting their own Black History Month events. And there's still time to enjoy a campus celebration next Tuesday from 5:00 to 6:15 p.m. Kendrick Elementary students and families will have the opportunity to learn about African-Americans who have excelled in their fields through grade-level activities and a jazz music performance. So I thank all of our teachers and campus staff who've honored the stories and voices of the past in ways that align to the district's mission and goals this month. And I might add to that that one of the things that I have really enjoyed seeing are the book displays with the new library books, and several campuses have posted pictures of those on their social media accounts, and very impressed by that and thankful. Moving on to the next item, Elementary and Middle School UIL, which was held on Saturday, January 28, had approximately 500 students, both elementary and middle school students from across the district, who came together at University High School for the annual district contest. We had all 15 elementary schools and all four middle schools participating in the first face-to-face event since 2020. Under the guidance and organization of Larry Carpenter, our Fine Arts Director, there were about 20 district staff and administrators who volunteered on that contest day. And our campuses assisted in administering, proctoring, and scoring the variety of contests that range in content areas from math and social studies to music and art appreciation and to speaking events. As always, music memory continued as the event with the most participation at the elementary level, and the writing events continued to be the most popular with middle schoolers. This year's elementary champion is Hillcrest PDS, and the middle school champion is Lake Air Montessori. And then something really exciting was our community beam signing event today at GW Carver. This was also the third site visit for our student ambassadors. And then we opened up a portion of the site this afternoon to our community for a special beam signing event for anyone who wanted to come and make their mark. So we had about 150 members of the public who came and signed their names. I know our construction workers will also be signing their name on the beam. And this is the final beam, a final structural, still beam for the campus that will be hoisted into place as early as tomorrow. It's a really big deal. It'll be at the front of the school building, as Alexis showed the students today, and really, really cool. So meant so much to include our community in celebrating the important milestone in construction, and lots of smiles from people out on the job site today, getting to see the building and put their name on this beam that will leave such an important piece of history for the future. And I know everyone appreciated getting to leave their mark. I want to thank Elizabeth and Team Alice and everyone who worked, and Josh Woodcher, everyone who worked to make this possible. It was a lot of work to pull this off, and it was just truly special. Thankful for that. Finally, some really good news, and not news that all districts get to share, but we got to announce that we have been validated for TIA, and we have approximately 1.1 million in incentive pay that will be paid out in August to 99 teachers who have been designated. And this is our second consecutive year of being validated since our first data collection year in 2020, 2021. And we've doubled the number of recognized teachers this year, so that's huge for us. We had 47 validated last year in the spring of '22. Five moved up a level, so you can get recognized exemplary, I'm trying to remember, and masters, and you get a different amount of money based on the level that you are. So we had some teachers who leveled up, which means they'll get more money. And the teachers get it for five years. So we have 59 newly designated teachers in the second phase, giving us a total of 99. And we are so proud of them, and it is a very arduous process, not only for the teachers, but it is for the district as well. In fact, I was visiting with the district yesterday at the Holdsworth Center, who just is doing their first phase of the TIA and are planning to start all over because the rollout was so challenging. And so I'm so thankful to Dr. Gutierrez and Amy Hossick, who have diligently worked to make this really smooth in Waco ISD. And it is a very complicated process with assessments at different grade levels and for different subject areas, and they've done that work beautifully. And it has been such a joy, just really last spring, to get to see teachers getting the money and now to give us some more money. And they'll get that in August, so we're blessed. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Kincanon. Sounds like if anyone is thinking of jumping back into the teaching field, this might be a good time to jump in.
There's money.
There's money.
And that will be, TIA will be a topic of the legislative session again as legislators talk about teachers and teacher satisfaction. And TIA is coming up as one of those things that they want to keep, from what I heard in Austin this week. And that's a good thing.
Let's hope they continue to fund it.
That's why it's on the, that's why it's being discussed, because the money has to be there to pay it. But we do need the legislators to make that a priority.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to Item Six, Information, Items, and Reports. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Davis?
I have a question for Ms. Davis, if she doesn't mind joining us at the front.
I didn't even see Ms. Davis. She's like hiding behind the pole.
Can we talk about on the monthly, I'm trying to get the agenda, monthly financial reports? It's the 5810 per capita and foundation school program revenue. It's the bottom of page nine in our packet. Can you just explain that more for us?
Yes, so what we're talking about here is our state revenue, foundation school program revenue. And we, of course, have to estimate what that's going to be every year at the beginning of the year. We did bring, unlike the last couple of years, we did bring our enrollment down for this year. I brought it down about 60 kids, which was still not enough because we're down about 240 again. We've actually lost about 1,000 kids over the last three years. So what we have after the first three, six weeks, I actually, today, got the four, six weeks. I'm getting ready to project on that. But it looks like we were going to be down around $3.5 million from what we had originally projected. We did get also our comptroller values, the preliminary values. We don't get them until this time of year, even though they impact this year's budget. So it's very difficult. That actually came out somewhat different from what we were being told by TEA that it would be. I have an issue with them. We've already filed some, I've sent a couple of emails, and Robert Myers is filing an appeal for us because they're still including the TIF deduction in those values after we went through all that last summer, trying to get that straightened out. So anyway, we're looking at that. If the values aren't what they say they're going to be, that could be another half million that we're going to lose there. So that's still early. That's also based on last year's patterns of attendance. So if, you know, so far, the first half of this year, or the spring semester of last year, so I project, use the fall of this year, projected forward based on last year's attendance patterns. So first semester was better than it was last year, so I'm hoping that the second semester will also be better and we'll end up with a little bit better picture than what we're projecting right now. I did look at some preliminary numbers. Of course, it's going to change based on what happens with the legislature and school funding. But one of the things we do know that's in current law is the change in the match for the golden pennies. If we get that, we won't lose any, even without an increase in the basic allotment, we'll be flat next year with what we are this year. So hopefully, we'll get more money, and it'll at least maybe fund salary increases and whatever. But that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're also underspending quite a bit, too, with salary savings.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis. We will move on to Item Number Seven, which is Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items from there?
I want to look at, let's see here. I want to recuse myself from E.
Okay.
And then I wanted to look at, where is it? M. Getting some information on that.
Okay, great. So we will do this. We will go through, is there anyone else who has anything they need to pull? Okay, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda item minus seven M. So we'll take seven M out and entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda minus the N. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Iazetti. And we'll have the recusal of Keith from this. So Keith, you can just not vote on this since the seven E is on there. Does that make sense? Okay, great. You want to take out one? Great, let's take out E and M. We'll have to entertain another motion, though.
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented minus seven M and seven E.
Great. Mr. Davis?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Seven E, Bid Award for Maintenance Supplies, Equipment, and Services. I'll entertain a motion. Or does anyone have any discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on Bid Award Maintenance Supplies, Equipment, and Services, seven E.
I move that we pass that item as recommended.
Okay, Ms. Iazetti, for, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have one recusal, which is Keith. Sorry, Mr. Guillory. Okay, and seven M. We'll move on to Agenda Item Seven M, First Reading of Board Policy Update 120.
Dr. Gutierrez did the preparation of that. This is a first reading only, so we have a month to work on this. So I'd be interested in which particular policy you're wanting to to look at there.
I remember we looked at it with our, with our counsel, with the, with our attorney. And I was trying to see where we were with it. And I didn't know if he was here to kind of explain what we were looking at. But if it's nothing, if it's just the first reading and we're not moving forward on it, we can, we can look at that later on. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, because I know it was trustee Davis and myself and.
Oh, a, a policy committee?
Yeah. And I wanted to make sure the other trustees saw what was moving forward.
This is actually a new one. I think the one we did previously, we adopted that we met and reviewed. And I think this is a new update from Tasby.
Okay.
Yes. So, but if there's a, if particular one that you would like to review, we can do that. And/or if you guys want to have another committee meeting, we can do that as well.
We'll do that. We'll punt right now.
Say it again?
I said, we'll do that. We'll, we'll wait and have the committee meeting over.
Okay, sounds good.
That's great. Okay, so we will, are you good with moving forward with that? Okay, great. So we're just going to do the first reading of that. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of board policy update 120.
Do we need to approve anything? I think this is just a reading.
I think you're fine.
Even though it's in consent?
It's, it is in consent. You can, you're not adopting any policy. So it's really just a review item. So I think Mrs. Iazetti is correct. It wouldn't need to be approved.
Okay, great.
It could actually be an informational item in the future on a first reading.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to item eight, consider discuss, take appropriate action regarding sign-on bonuses for certified teachers, counselors, librarians, Libra, media specialists, nurses and police officers.
A lot to say, isn't it?
Yes, that is a lot to say.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kincanon, members of the board. Before I begin, I'd like to share something to you that came to me this afternoon. And sometimes I think you all need to hear that the work you do is impactful. And this is a positive and heartfelt message. I received an email from a gentleman this afternoon. His name is Clint. And he was asking if anyone could look up the years his mom had worked at Carver. Her name was Nancy Roberts at the time. She would have been there between 1974 and 1982, I think. I was wanting to sign the beam at the school in her memory today. And so I text, I emailed him back and I said, yes, let me get on that information, fine. Well, that's a long time ago. And a lot of our files are not here anymore. But he said that he was going to swing by today at 4:30 to sign that beam. Well, we were able to find information about Ms. Roberts. Her name is Ms. Roberts Detlifson. She worked in Waco for 42 years. She taught from 1972 to 1987, 15 years. And then she was a counselor from 1987 to 2014, ending her career at Tennyson Middle School for 27 years, which all accounted for the 42 years she was in Waco. He responded back, so thankful. She was loved by so many people. I was lucky to be at Lake Eyre when she was there. And I was there with her, with her, during the time of her retirement. I want to thank you again and please let, let everyone else know. Thank you. And I wrote back on behalf of all of you. We are glad that we could help. This was, this will be a great memory for you and an honor for your mother to be on that beam. So just a nice, heartwarming felt message that you probably don't get to hear all the time, but it was a good message today for us. And I wanted to make sure I shared that. Thank you for letting me do that.
No, thank you.
And thank you for helping him. I think that means a lot. Glad we were able to recognize her.
Well, it's, it's a reflection on the work that we're doing here and how impactful it is for our community. So thank you so much. I come before you today, ask with a board document. As you know, just not here, but across this nation, we are seeing a shortage of fully certified teachers, counselors, librarians, library media specialists, registered nurses and police officers. This, our shortage is due to a higher than state average of turnover rate. So one of the most pressing issues that schools are facing currently is fully certified teachers. This has resulted in classrooms being covered by substitutes, long-term subs, some without degrees, larger class sizes, new teachers hired on emergency permits who are in an alternative certified, certification program, who are not certified yet. And we've been using other ways to combat the shortage within our own classrooms here in Waco. So in order to fill these vacancies, we're, our, the administration is recommending the following sign-on bonuses for your consideration. A $5,000 sign-on bonus for fully certified or eligible for certification pending graduation, classroom teachers, counselors and librarians slash media specialist hired on or before June 1st, 2023. The sign-on bonus will require a commitment to work for us for two years. Number two, we ask for a sign-on bonus of $5,000 for police officers hired by August 1st, 2023. And three, a sign-on bonus of $2,500 for nurses hired by August 1st, 2023. Upon approval by you all, we will begin to advertise these sign-on bonuses just in time for our April 1st job fair. Our recommendation is that you approve this 2023, 2024 sign-on bonuses as we have presented.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the administration's recommendation. Sorry, I don't have the verbiage right now.
Do you want us to make a motion and then have discussion?
Yeah, so we're going to make a motion in a second, put it in play, and then we can have a discussion and ask Mr. Lopez. So entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay, now are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Iazetti?
Why is the commitment only for the teachers and not for the other two positions?
Two-year commitment.
Or is it for all of them?
We wrote it for teachers to keep the retention rate for our teachers within the classroom to have some stability.
But why wouldn't we ask for that two-year commitment from the other two positions as well? I mean, the police officers, it's the same amount of additional money.
I think we intended to ask for that for police officers for sure. The nurses was $2,500. I don't know, you know, I don't know that you can get a commitment for two years for that amount of money. But I, I believe we fully intended to, yes.
We can certainly amend that. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I would encourage that.
Yes, I just want to piggyback and encourage that as well. And some kind of commitment for the nurses as well, even if it's not a two-year commitment. I think some kind of commitment would be helpful.
Yep.
So how?
So to keep it consistent, would you accept that we, for all three areas, we amended two years?
Or could we?
The nurses be one year since its half.
To make sure that they complete the entire contract.
All right.
I have a question.
No, it was a good catch. Yes, Mr. Grant? No, that's good.
How do we hold teachers accountable for being here two years? Do we delay the second half of the payment? Or it seems to me if we provide cash all upfront, it's near impossible to require a two-year. So that if it's impossible, why do we offer a two-year guarantee?
Yeah. You, you typically do some kind of a written agreement that says they'll, they'll pay it back. But I hear you. It is, you know, it is hard to get that money back. But you, the idea is that they commit and we want them to stay. We want them to sign saying that they'll stay for the money. We really like the idea of paying it upfront because it, you know, it's, it's, a lot of industry is doing that now. You get that money right upfront when you start. And we want, we want certified teachers. And the goal here is to have teachers who are coming to us already certified. So we're not just offering a sign-on bonus for a teacher, but we're, we're trying to capture those who have experience. They already completed their certification. And so that's, that's kind of where we are.
So if, if we, I was hoping to ask this of Peter. If we provide all the money upfront, is it possible in the contract to, whether it's vesting or after every semester, you're not responsible to pay back a quarter or whatever it be, so that we, if somebody leaves after one year, then they would be responsible for paying one year back? I mean, I know that lots of retirement programs, you're vested and they give it to you upfront, but after one year, you're vested for a quarter and so, such and such, so that there's some teeth to it. Because honestly, most of the things I see, there's just no teeth to it. And if, if it's possible to legally hold folks accountable to pay back half if they leave after one year, then I would love to find a way to do that.
Okay, we can do that. I've done that before on some other, like Grow Your Own programs, where we paid for, in my prior district, where we paid upfront for some things for teachers, helped them get their college education. So we can certainly do that.
I mean, that's just a suggestion. I'm not, I'm not going to talk about it.
Appreciate, appreciate the suggestion.
That's great.
We had 80, just to remind, I don't know if I said this, but to remind you, we had 85 teachers who came to us under emergency certification this year. And I don't remember how many we had the year before, but we had a good number the year before as well. And one of the things I heard in visiting with teachers in the spring was that they had not fulfilled their certification requirements. And they were stressed because they, they, they hadn't taken their tests, they hadn't passed their tests, and they weren't going to be able to come back as teachers. And so what we're trying to do is catch some people who already have that. So we don't have that extra stress of, of trying to help them get there and our kids get an experienced teacher.
I think it's great. I would just love for a teacher.
Yeah, me too. Yes, sir.
I have, yeah, I have a question. So the police officer positions, are these for new positions that were created? Or are we just trying to fill existing positions?
It would be filling the existing positions.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question on the police officer side. Is there, I know Waco PD is offering sign-on bonuses. Is this comparable to, to that? Do we know?
I'm not sure.
It's not. Because I saw one of their recent posts and I think their post said something like 15,000. And I thought, oh, my goodness, that's a lot. And, you know, 5,000 is big for us. But when I saw that, I thought, phew. Yeah, 15,000 is what I saw in the post recently. But we think it will help.
My other question is, do you know how many people, so if you have a $5,000 sign-on bonus for two police officers, that's one thing, if you have 100, if you, the scale is sufficient, do you have any idea of the number of teachers, nurses and officers? Do you know what a full sign-on bonus number might be?
Mm-hmm. We estimated on the, in the, go ahead, Dean.
In the, in the fiscal implications, we estimated that teachers, counselors, librarians slash media, library and media specialist would be approximately $500,000. 12,500 for nurses, 25,000 for police officers.
That's assuming we, we fill all the positions.
That's assuming that we fill all those positions. That's correct.
And our goal was to bring this, this month, so, because we're in hiring season. And, and I know that other districts are already posting their job fairs and recruiting teachers. And Dr. Lopez is ready to go as well. So he's, he is trying to get a move on it.
Is Chief here?
He is not.
Okay, well.
But I've talked to him. If you have a question, I might be able to answer it.
Well, I'm just curious of how the challenge of us offering five and should be offering 15, what that means.
Yeah, he was, he, we, we recommended 2,500 to start with and he asked for five. And he was thrilled by that. And, you know, he, he can get, he, he can get some police officers, but he's pretty picky about the kind of police officer that would be good to work with kids. And so recruiting is a little bit harder for us in that aspect. But he was happy with $5,000.
Okay. Well, how about this? Since this is an agenda item that is on the floor and active, how about we say, approve the 2023, 2024 sign-on bonuses as presented with an amendment of
Two-year.
In two-year commitment for
Police officers.
Police officers. And then a one-year commitment for nurses. Is that good?
Let's read for the record the others. Let's, can I just?
Yeah, that's great. Please.
So we will do a 5,000 sign-on bonus for fully certified or eligible for certification pending graduation, classroom teachers, counselors and librarians slash library media specialist hired on or for June 1st, 2023. A sign-on bonus for $5,000 for police officers hired by August 1st, 2023. The sign-on bonus for these two groups will require a commitment to work for Waco ISD for two years. A sign-on bonus for $25,000 for nurses hired by, 2,500, excuse me.
[laughing]
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
[laughing]
It sounded good.
You just had a whole bunch of nurses who were going to be applying.
I didn't mean it, Cheryl. I'm sorry.
[laughing]
A sign-on bonus for $2,500 for nurses hired by August 1st, 2023. The sign-on bonus for this group will require a commitment to work for Waco ISD for one year.
Perfect. Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who said it first? Oh, he's giving it to you, Mr. Grant. Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
[applause]
25,000 for nurses. Wow. Okay, we are moving on to item number nine, review, discuss student achievement data for academic intervention programs. Ms. Parnell, you are up.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good.
Good. Okay, I think I have to click her. Okay, well, I'm excited and proud to be here tonight and to talk to you about the academic intervention programs and the progress that we have seen and the data we've collected. So just to kind of review what my role is and what intervention is. And we call that in public schools, response to intervention, or RTI. So you'll hear that acronym a lot. And RTI is focused on a proactive approach. So we're trying to catch students before they get further behind. So we try to be proactive. We're using data to determine which students need to be worked with, with a universal screener. And then when we look at the data, that's what we tier students by. So when I talk to you, I'm going to talk about the different tiers. This is our Waco ISD pyramid. And so if you look at the pyramid, at the bottom, students that are in tier one are typically every student in education, right? Those are your students, they're getting core instruction. And again, tier one involves all students, but typically, typically 80% or more of your school's population should be getting tier one. 100% get it, but 80% only need tier one in order to make progress with the curriculum. Then you look at the next one, that's considered tier two, and it's coded yellow. We're very color-coded in, in this area. So that typically is about 15% of your population. And that's what we call targeted intervention. And then the next tier is tier three, and that's typically about 5% of your student population. That's what we call intensive and very individualized. You're looking at students' individualized needs, what you need to target, what you need to reteach as far as those foundational skills. And in Waco, we actually have a fourth tier. And it's what we call specialized curriculum. Those are your students who are in special education, who are getting pulled into what we call a resource classroom, a functional academic classroom. They're getting modified curriculum. It also includes your dyslexia students. And the reason why we did this in Waco is because we know we're always going to have a group of students who aren't going to qualify for special education, because they don't have the strengths and the pattern of strengths and weaknesses. So we knew we needed to focus and hone in on a group of students that wouldn't qualify, even though we know they're delayed and we know that they need, you know, they're not working on grade level, and they are, they're not going to meet that criteria. So we felt it important to separate. gonna meet that criteria. So we felt important to separate those two. Any questions over that?
I, I actually have a question. So sorry, could we go back? So on the, on the kind of the intervention period, or pyramid, help me kind of understand it, sorry. So I know that you're saying kind of like eighty percent of students kind of fall in that tier, fifteen percent in the targeted, and about five percent in kind of that extreme individualized kind of instruction. Is that kind of true for our district, or is it kind of leaning a little bit more towards targeted?
No, ma'am, and I'm gonna show you the specific numbers for our district. Yes, ma'am. Good question, ma'am.
Today's theme, trustee Izetti, Izetti is saying is wait and scroll down. Wait and scroll down. All the questions, so sorry.
And so I just wanna kind of give you a picture of what the students look like. So what we consider a tier one student, again, they're green, typically they've passed their STAR tests. They've passed their, their taught curriculum assessments. These students, when we do the universal screener that I've talked to y'all about, that we do three times a year, typically these students fall above the twenty-fifth percentile. So again, average is fiftieth, so you have your bell-shaped curve. So these students are twenty-sixth or above. And typically, that instruction, again, these are the students who are taught by the classroom teacher, they get it the first time it's taught, maybe they need one reteach, but they don't need repetition of skills. So that's considered tier one, that should be eighty percent of our school's population. Then you get to a tier-two student, again, they're color-coded yellow. And typically, these are your students who have probably felt STAR one year, not probably, they have one year. And you may have a two-year one. And they typically, on the screener, fall between the tenth and the twenty-fifth percentile. And these students are taught tier-two intervention by the classroom teacher. It's done in small group for elementary, it's done during the guided reading time, the guided math time. When we get to secondary, if y'all remember, we've implemented the WIN time, because they have forty-five minute blocks, and they have to get through that core instruction, right? So we started the WIN at the middle school and the high school. And so during that time is when those students are re-taught the curriculum for tier two. Then you get to tier three, and these are the students who fall below the tenth percentile. So these are students who are multiple years below grade level, these are the students who have felt STAR multiple years, and the instructions provided by what we call our sit teachers, our student intervention teachers. And, and they are in a pool, a small group setting. So this is what we call intense intervention. Any questions over that? So when we look at Waco ISD, this kind of is your, addresses your question, currently right now, based on this year's data, sixty-eight percent of our students fall in what we call the tier-one range. When we look at, and this is for reading, when we look at tier two, we have seventeen percent of students. And then when you look at tier three, we have fifteen percent of students who met the criteria. So fifteen percent of our students currently are falling below the tenth percentile and have felt STAR multiple years. And I'm gonna kind of explain why this, why I feel like this has happened, and what we're doing to fix it. Yes, sir?
Oh, so, looking at this one, compared to the tiered level where you said
The pyramid.
It was around eighty percent. How, what are those numbers based on? Like, why is there a difference in between?
So this is Waco's ISD's number. So basically, this is showing you that we have more students, and again, that's the average. When you look overall at the nation, this is how many they say should be. If, if you're tier-one curriculum strong, then eighty percent of your kids should be progressing. And so we know in Waco ISD that we needed to improve our core instruction, right? That's why we have Dr. Corn Bloom and our team working with the DDI process, you know, curriculum writing, aligning, all that. So we know we needed to address that. So, and I'll show you in a minute where we're seeing growth, but we know that's gonna take a couple of years. And again, so yes, we know our, our numbers are above where they should be, and that's why we continue to address and work then.
Sorry, just for clarification. So the first pyramid was like ideal world?
Yes, ma'am.
This is where we're at, okay.
Yes, ma'am. That is the ideal world, world. Good, good comparison. This is our math. So again, we have about sixty-eight percent in tier one. And again, this is K through twelve, right? So you need to factor, and remember, or factor that in. Nineteen percent is tier two, and then we have about thirteen percent at tier three. And, and when you have tier one, so if I'm a tier-one student, I'm getting core. But if I'm tier two or tier three, I'm also getting tier one. If I'm tier three, I'm getting tier two, and I'm getting tier one. It's important that we understand it's supplemental, so they build on each other.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know you're gonna get into what we're doing to kind of raise the numbers, but is there any comparison to show us year by year, is this getting better? Are we trending in the right direction? Is it?
Yes, sir.
Any data to show that?
Yes, sir. And then at the end, oh, sorry, there. If, if you feel like I need to present more data, I have lots of data, I can share, that I didn't put in here. I didn't wanna get overwhelming. So let me explain what tier-three intervention is, and then I'll go into ask or answer those specific questions. And so again, tier-three intervention is intensive instruction provided in a small group setting, and it's using explicit instruction techniques. And, and within Waco ISD, we have our tier-three, but we also require a little more from our sit teachers, and that stands for supplemental instruction. We also require that they do goal-setting with the students. So they are to show the students the data. They look at the data, they talk to the student about where they are and where they want to be, or where they need to be. And we also ask that they do conferencing weekly to talk about their progress. So this week, you made this percentage on the, and you've shown this much growth. And they also have to do positive intervention support. So we feel that's important, because again, these students have never been successful, right? They have felt like a failure for many years in their academic career. So what I tell our teachers is you're the lifelines, you're the anchors. You're the ones that are gonna make them feel successful, so they can flip it and go back in the classroom and build upon that success. This is a picture of our forty-two reading sit teachers and our thirty math sit teachers that we took at the beginning of the year. And they're funded through state comp, and then we have one or two funded through title, and then we have a group funded through SRR. So just to kind of give you a background on it, before this administration came into place, and before Dr. Corn Bloom was here, we had people that worked for the district that are currently still work for me now, that had asked for certain things to happen. One of them was that sit teachers were staffed at each campus. So that didn't happen. Each campus had the right to staff what they wanted to. So in some campuses, you may have a sit teacher, other campuses, you may have a part-time tutor, and another campus, you may have a retired teacher. So there wasn't equity among the campuses. The other thing that happened was there wasn't a specific criteria. So one campus, a student might be tier three, but if they moved to another campus, they may be considered tier two. So what we did is when we came in in two-twenty, is we came up with specific criteria as to how to tier students. And then we also had the campuses staff the sit teachers with their state comp funding. So when you look back at two thousand and nineteen, at that time, before we came in and had the systems and structures, we only had six hundred and eighty-eight students served in math, and we had one thousand and thirty-two served in reading. So again, the concern is, is that we had students who weren't getting their needs met, who already were behind in learning, had the gaps. And so what's happened is they've continued in school, and the gaps got greater. And so that's why I see, think you see the increase now, or we do see the increase, is because we had students who weren't served for many years. So the goal is, is we continue to serve the students, and we see the growth, that our numbers are gonna decrease. Does that make sense? So currently, right now, in Waco ISD, for tier three, this again, is just tier three, we are serving one thousand and eighty in elementary, we are serving five hundred and thirty-four in middle school, and four hundred and forty-eight in high school. So that's a total of two thousand and sixty-two students that are getting tier-three intervention. And again, tier-three intervention is thirty to forty-five minutes a day, four to five times a week.
Have a question. What does that process look like as far as identifying students on the elementary level? Are we just identifying more, or are the high school numbers improving? Like, why is there such a difference?
So I think with the high school, we're focusing primarily on your ninth and tenth graders at this point, who we need to get to pass EOC. The elementary is also, it's one through fifth, so you have more students that we're, we're targeting. Once they pass that English one EOC and English two EOC and algebra, then, then typically, if, then we're not providing that intervention at that time, because they've met the criteria. At that point, we're focusing on the TSI. And I think I've talked about WIN time, how we have students who are, they're getting EOC prep. Once they pass EOC, then we move them to TSI. And then we're working on this TSI skills. And after they pass, or show proficiency on TSI, then we're moving them to the ACT SAT prep for those college-bound students. So it's kind of a continuum of what we do. So when I talk about high school, I'm only targeting mostly ninth-grade students, and then your tenth grade who didn't pass English one. So I think that's why the numbers are probably smaller, if that makes sense. In math, in elementary, we're serving seven hundred and fifty-nine, middle school's six hundred and eight, and high school's four hundred and eight. And again, so the high school, we're, we're focusing on those algebra one students, who didn't, either didn't pass their eighth-grade math, and they're in a math lab in ninth grade, because we want them to pass algebra one, or they didn't pass the algebra one EOC. So this is what's exciting, that I'm, I'm excited to tell you about. So when, again, when we started and we implemented sit teachers across the district, and it was the equitable staffing, and this is based on September the fifteenth, twenty-one, to when I pulled the data on February the third. So if you look at the tier three, there's an arrow, the yellow, so three hundred and ninety-six students within this time went from tier three to tier two. Then if you look on the other side, you see the green. Within this time period, we had three hundred and fifty-six students go from tier three to tier one. And this is on reading. So again, you have close to seven hundred over seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred students who have shown growth by multiple years and are now able to either be in tier two or tier one. So that's exciting to me. Then you look at the math, again, the same thing. On the left, you have the tier three to the tier two. So within that, we have moved three hundred and fifty-one students from tier three to tier two. And then we have moved three hundred and fifty from tier three to tier one. Any questions on that?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
No, no.
What is the, and you're probably gonna talk about it, but what does the assessment process look like to get someone from, to a lower tier?
Right. So what we do is, that's where we use the universal screener. So three times a year, we provide the universal screener, and that's where the campuses have what's called a campus leadership team. It's where the school administrator, the, the RTI campus coordinator, the instructional specialist, and sometimes the sit teacher, it depends on the campuses, they meet and they look at the data. So again, I'm looking at the data, and if a student at the beginning of the year was below the tenth percentile, and they felt STAR multiple years, but then at the mid-year, they show that they placed above the tenth percentile, they've passed a couple of TCAs, or they've shown improvement on their TCAs, then we would probably move them to tier two, because they're growing. So they're not showing the need for that specially-designed instruction, or that specialized intensive instruction. So then that means they can be served with that classroom teacher in small group. To move from a tier three to tier one, they first of all had to pass STAR, if they're in a STAR testing grade. And so we had that happen. We had lots of students, not lots, I can't give you the exact number, but I can research it for you, that were tier three that passed STAR this year. So that's how that would happen. If you're K through two, it's based on the BASS testing, which is like a running record. And again, it would, it means that they would be grade equivalent.
Do you know the number of, like, a target number to go from tier three to tier two, and a target number of students to go from tier three to tier one? Do y'all have a goal set each year, or is it, it's just kind of, we get however many we get through the process?
Yeah. I mean, you know, again, we, I would love for all the students to be out of tier three, but you're always just on the, the norm of the bell-shaped curve, you're always gonna have students who are gonna need intensive intervention. Whether it's, they have a learning disability, and we need to provide the intervention to see, you know, if it's that, if it's socioeconomic, if it's lack of, you know, prerequisite skills they had, is it attendance? There's so many factors that factor into that. But that's just the normal percentage that we know that we're always gonna have in public.
I think what I was trying to, because at the beginning, you said the ideal kind of tiers, and it had certain percentages. So I was saying, if that's our ideal, that's what we're looking to go towards, how do we measure if we're getting towards that, you know, coveted percentage? Is, is it a certain target we're trying to meet per semester? Or how, how, how are you guys measuring progress?
As far as my goal, is that our students that are in tier three, they grow at least two years. So as far as a targeted goal of when we can get all the students out of tier three, I don't have that, no, I don't have a measure. But what we would do is, we would, this was our, this is our second full year we've implemented this, right? So what we would do is, we would compare it this time next year, to see if those numbers decreased.
A goal would be, though, to get to the eighty, fifteen, and five?
That's the, that's
End goal. Not the end goal, but a great goal.
Also, because I developed the fourth tier, again, you're gonna have some specialized students that would have, in normal circumstance, fallen in that tier three. So it would typically be eight to ten percent. But again, we have students third in specially-designed instruction that wouldn't fall in that fifth percentile, if that makes sense.
I have a very basic question. I'm not too smart in some of these things. So if somebody tested two years ago in tier three, and they've tested now two years later, is the testing that's happening now taking into consideration that they're two years older, and that they should have learned some stuff anyway? Or is it, this test was against other third graders, and now this test is up against other fifth graders?
So it depends on what measure we use. So for Renaissance, yes. So it's basically comparing them to their peers within the, the district.
Okay.
So we, we norm ours within the district. But we also look at STAR measures. So again, that's comparing, you know, the skill score that Ms. Bell will talk about, that it's rated within the state. So it depends on the measures, but typically, you're comparing them to grade equivalent peers.
Okay.
It depends if it's within the district, the state, or the national level. But if they're, if they're in there for two years, and they haven't made progress, that's where we're gonna refer them to special education. And so that's what our ladies, our team did on January twenty-seventh, is they looked at their sit data, and they went through every student. And if they had a student who made no growth, then they refer that to student to what's called a student assistance team. And then that team looks and says, okay, do we need to refer them to special education, to see if there's additional disability? And sometimes we test them, and they, we do, and then sometimes we test them, and they don't qualify, because they're what we call a slow learner. They don't have the, the patterns of strengths and weaknesses.
How, how often does that happen, to where a student is not sure of growth after two years, and then they're referred to special education?
I don't have the exact numbers. We wouldn't wait two years, I could tell you that. Typically, we have cycles. So at the beginning of the year, at the, and the mid-year. So that's what we did this past, January the twenty-seventh, it was a mid-year cycle. So the teachers were looking at, okay, they had intensive intervention for over twelve weeks, and they've shown no growth. If they make some growth, that's great. And I'm gonna break down to you, or break it down in a minute by percentages, of how many students made growth by three months, six months, one year. So that may answer your question a little bit.
Do we consider maybe the intervention as well, or is it just if the intervention they're getting didn't work, then we refer them, we refer them to special education, or do we try another intervention?
So, that's a great question. So I kind of look at that holistically. So like this past year, and I'll talk about it, I looked at our data, and so we had, just based on the data, shown that we had students that had deficits in phonics, that we knew we needed to amp up our phonemic awareness curriculum. And so we embedded more phonics in the curriculum. So it really just depends on the data. If there's strong data that shows we have deficits among a specific topic, our concept, then I know, okay, that's a curricular issue, and we need to provide something else. If it's a teacher issue, again, I have every teacher, sit teacher's data, and I'm comparing the teachers, and then I compare them to the average growth, and I send that to every principal. Here's your sit teachers' growth by their students, here's the district growth. So is, if it's a teacher issue, then that's when my team goes in and does more coaching. We take that teacher to another campus, and they observe the model teacher that way. So, I mean, it just depends whether it's a teacher issue, whether it's a school issue, or a district issue. Makes sense?
I appreciate that. I think that's appreciated. I know I would, you mentioned earlier that some of our students feel like they're failures after repeatedly failing these standardized tests, and I would hate for, to add special education label on top of that. So if there's other ways that we can find interventions that may work, I would appreciate that for sure.
Yes, absolutely. Again, we, we tell our teachers and explain that to our teachers. And when we see a video at the end, it'll kind of support what we're talking about. So this is the elementary growth, kind of what y'all were talking about. So what I did is I took all the students who are in elementary, and I looked at their Renaissance data from beginning of the year, which was September, to when we did our Renaissance testing in January. And so this breaks it down. So the overall growth of students for reading within a three-month period was seven months. Again, this is average. We had some students that grew two years, we had some students who, again, as you can see here, grew only three, zero to three months. So we had nineteen percent for reading, grew zero to three months. We had twenty-eight percent grew three to six months.
Can I interrupt you? This is all elementary school students, or this is tier-three elementary school students?
This is just our tier three.
Just tier three, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This is just tier three. This is just tier three. And we had 33%, so a third of our students grew six to 12 months within a three month period. We had 18% grew one to two years within a three month period. We had 2% grew two to three years. And we had a point oh six grow over three years. Then you look at the math, again, the average growth, this is all the tier three students in elementary for Waco ISD, grew an average of eight months within a three month period. We had 20% that grew zero to three months. We had 22% who grew three to six months. And 29% who grew six to 12, 28 who grew one to two years, 1% who grew two to three years, and then point oh two percent who grew over three years. So this is elementary.
I have a question.
Sorry.
So when we're saying they grew seven months, are we meaning on grade level or just where they were previously?
No, it's where they were previously. So let's say if I tested at the beginning of the year and I tested at a 1.1 grade equivalent and then mid-year I tested at 1.8, then I grew seven months.
Even if I'm in fifth grade?
Yes, sir. Because again, what we look at is where they are. And we have to build them up to grade level. So we got to figure out where they're currently working, their instructional level, figure out the deficits, the skills that they need, and then bring them up to the grade level. But we, so we have to preteach those skills they're missing to get them where they need to be.
Do you know what percentage of the kids grow to grade level to read on grade level or do math on, at grade level that are tier three? If they're behind, right? Because all students in tier three are behind.
Right, so typically, tier three students, two or three years behind.
Yes.
So you can look at that percentage.
Zero six.
So just the point zero, okay.
Two or three years, 1%.
I'm sorry, just one other question. So if after seven months, a student has grown by six months, then they've fallen behind by another month, is that right?
So this was a three month period.
Right, I'm just saying, yeah, so if we're looking at a three month period and they've grown three months, then they're staying on track to where they were. Okay.
And again, those are the students that we're, we're looking at. Why haven't they grown? Again, I'm getting intense intervention four to five times a week for 30 to 45 minutes. If I haven't shown any growth, then what else is going on? Is it absences? Is it something going on in the home? Is it that they need to be referred for further testing because there's a disability present? So those are the questions we're asking ourselves and that the campuses and the sit teachers are asking. Because you should grow with that intense intervention. And again, that's where I go back to, that I'm looking at specific data for the teachers to ensure it's not a teacher issue and then the curriculum, to make sure it's not a curriculum issue. Then we look at our middle school. And again, this is grade six through eight, again, a three month period. So the overall growth for reading was seven months. So we had about 28% grow zero to three months. We had 22% grow to three to six months. 24, six to 12. 25% grew one to two years. 1% grew two to three years. Then the math, we had a growth of nine months, an average growth of nine months. And then again, zero to three was about 20%. And three to six was 21%. Six to 12 was 27. One to two was 23. And then we had 1% grew two to three. And then 2%, three to five. Then we look at our high school. Again, we're targeting the ninth and 10th graders. These are students who felt eighth grade star in reading at our math and felt English one and two or EOC. So for our ninth and 10th graders, we had an average growth of 1.8 years. And I'm going to show you that specific data in a minute and show you the program we use and the data we gleaned on that. And we had 6% grow zero to three months. And again, these are our students who are our absent students, who aren't showing up for class. And so what we've done with that is we are working with those APs to get those students in school. We had 8% grow three to six months. We had 15% grow six to 12 months. 29% grew one to two years. 22% grew two to three years. We had 19% grow over three years. In math, we had an average gain of one year, two months. We had 20% grow zero to three months. We had 18% grow three to six months. 26% grew six to 12 months. 23% grew one to two years. 6% grew two to three years. And we had over 6% grow over three years. This is our tier three students, how they did on the fall interim. So, and I'm sure Ms. Bell will explain the fall interim, or she may or may not. But the fall interim is basically, it's a mock star test. So these are grade level teaks these students are tested on. So again, remember, these students we know are not working on grade level. So what we want to focus on, on our students are their growth measure that Ms. Bell's talked to you about. So we want to show growth from one point to another point. So when we look at the fall interim for tier three students, 46% of our fourth graders met the growth measure. Again, remember, they haven't been taught all the teaks. This was a test that was the wide spectrum of the teaks for the entire year. We gave it to them in October. Was it October, Ms. Bell? November. We had 67% meet the growth measure already on math for fourth grade. For fifth grade reading, we had 66% already meet the growth measure. For fifth grade math, we had 73% of our tier three students meet the growth measure. Sixth grade reading was 50%. Sixth grade math was 60%. Seventh grade reading was 86%. Seventh grade math was 79%. Eighth grade reading was 71%. And eighth grade math was 91%. Ninth grade reading was 42%. Ninth grade math was 52%. And then 10th grade, our English one retesters was at 40%. So again, I'm excited about that because like I said, this is being assessed on curriculum that hasn't even been taught yet. So this is the reading plus data that I wanted to show you all. This is the program that we use in our secondary intervention labs. And the model that we have is that the teacher has a small group at the teacher table and she's working on those prerequisite skills that align to that grade level curriculum that she needs to reteach to fill in the gaps. And then we have the students working at an independent or computer station. And they're doing what's called reading plus. So it's a little confusing. But if you look at the first graph, you see number of students. And then you see the numbers at the bottom, say one through 20, 21 through 40. So those are the number of lessons. The graph in the middle shows the same number, one through 20. So if you look at four stu-, or if you look at the students, it's 2010 students have done one through 20 lessons. The reason why that's so low is because that's based on students who tested but aren't in the sit lab. So there's lots of students who haven't been working in the program because that's not what the program's for. We're also using it to do our universal screener. So that's a little bit confusing. But what I want you to focus on is about the 41 to 60. There's 199 students. Then you see the 61 to 80 lessons and the 81 to 100. If you go to the far right graph, you can compare it. So again, the students who have done 41 to 60 lessons have shown one year growth, one year five month growth. This is in our sit labs. The students who have done 61 to 80 lessons have grown two years. Students that have done 81 to 100 lessons have grown two years, two months. And the students who have done 101 or plus lessons have grown over two years. The yellow graph in the middle are the words per minute, the fluency, how quickly you can read. And so there's a strong correlation that if you're a fluent reader, you're going to comprehend better. So that's why it's important that we also focus on the fluency and the silent reading. So that's the district.
How long does it take to get 101 lessons? Is it one a day?
So we, within what our goal is, is they, it's about 15 to 20 minutes to do a lesson. And then we want them to get 80%. I could do a lesson in five minutes and not get the 80%. So again, these are the students who are doing the lessons and getting the 80%. So typically, it's 15 to 20 minutes. In the sit lab, we ask that they at least do, at least four lessons a week because they should do a lesson by themselves. And then they should be with the teacher, the other half.
Okay.
And those, those lessons test on comprehension, not just?
So reading plus focuses on vocabulary, comprehension, and then the fluency rate. And then that's averaged together to get a reading proficiency rate.
So it would take somebody six months if they did four a week to get to 101 lessons? So maybe six months to get to gain 2.3 years.
Right, but remember, this is just on our fall data. So we have students, we ask that they do four lessons a week. And if they do their lessons and they get 80%, then the sit teachers reward those students on Fridays and with, you know, some snacks or some free time. But we have students doing more than that, so.
And what do those lessons look like? Are they, I mean, I could pass anything if I took the same lesson over and over again? I mean, do they differentiate?
So it's based on an interest. So the student can go in and click a topic of interest. And then it's based on their reading proficiency level. So they do the assessment and then it puts them on their instructional reading level. And so within that, the student reads. And the way this program works, there's a cursor and it highlights the word. And so the student has to look at the word as they read. And so again, that's working on the reading fluency. It's also teaching students that you read from left to right, that you don't go to the top to the bottom, to the bottom, back to the top. Because a lot of our students don't track correctly. So therefore, they're not reading. So it works on that, too. So after they read the lesson, then they have to ask, answer comprehension questions over it. But so no, it's a different lesson every time. And then the teacher pulls them to the teacher table and does a comprehension teak or an English teak based on the data, based on the TCAs or the star of the interim. So it's very laborious, it's very, it's exhausting. So I mean, the students are like, I have to do this again. And so the teacher's like, yes, we need to do it because, again, building the relevance of why we need them on this program. But the good thing is the rigor's there because it's helping prepare them for star. Because star's a rigorous test. You have to sit there for hours and be able to read multiple stories. So again, we're training our students to be able to handle, handle the rigor of star.
Sorry, now I have a question here. So the reading plus, I'm, in my mind, I'm kind of imagining it kind of like a star Renaissance, kind of like go through the thing. But then there's also like fluency component to it and that. Does the reading plus, so I know on like star Renaissance, you can pull, not star Renaissance in the reading, but like the math one, you could see what objectives they missed. Does this program offer teachers kind of, hey, the student seems to be struggling in this, you know?
It breaks it up into the, the specific domains that, again, the English one has. So then a teacher could say, oh, cause and effect or summarization or inferencing. And so that's what the teacher's doing at the small group teacher table. She's again, looking at the data based on the TCAs, the interim, the star. This student didn't do well on inferencing. I need to pull the student back and reteach them inferencing. And then she's looking at the student data, how they're doing on reading plus. And again, using that to see if they need to teach it.
I love that because anytime a teacher could just go to computer, pull a report, group her students super quickly, the computer has kind of disaggregated all that data for her and pulled it. I'm like, the quicker we can get data into teachers' hands, the quicker their interventions and the easier their job is actually. And they don't have to go through and do that. So that's wonderful.
Absolutely. That's our goal is we wanted to provide the teachers the resources. This is our middle school growth. And so again, that shows the number of lessons. So if you get into the 58 students have done 61 to 80 lessons, the 111 have done 41 to 60, those are your tier three students. So if you go to the far graph, again, the students who have completed 41 to 60 lessons have grown one year, five months. 61 to 80, two years. 81 to 100, two years. And then we have four students because have regained three years using reading plus.
In four months, maybe?
Yes, sir. This is just your high school data specifically. Again, you can look at, to the left, the students that have done 61 to 80, 81 to 100, 41 to 60. And that shows their growth. So again, the students who have done 41 to 60, and that's 61 students have grown one year, seven months. Students who have done 61 to 80, that's 35 students have grown two years, four months. And then the 81 and above are two years, two months. And the reason why that's lower is we have some students that maybe just clicked through it and don't have the high 80% comprehension rate. And so they may have done the lessons, but they haven't shown that they've done it with fidelity. And so that's when the teacher pulls them back and has a little conference about why we do this and what we need to do to do better. So the next piece of reading plus data is the NSIT survey. So that's the screener that we're using. And I wanted to show you this graph because what it does, it compares benchmark one to benchmark two. So again, it's only 289 students because we're comparing apples to apples. So again, these are the students that tested beginning year and mid-year. Not everybody at the secondary level tested mid-year. We just did it for our intervention labs. So you want, you don't want red, right? You want the red to go down. So beginning of the year, 68% of the students, based on this assessment, and again, this is one piece of data. When we're tiering our students, when we talk about growth, we look at multiple sources of data. Because I could have taken the test and not felt like doing it and not, I've done my best, right? But we look at this, and so if you look at, at the beginning of the year, 68% of our students were below five grade levels. And then mid-year it went to 61. And then you go a little bit higher or a little bit lighter, red is 9% were below, four, or four years below, and then it went to 60%, 16%. And so that's what we want to look. We want to see less red and more green. So again, this is just another data point that shows it's working. This is the high school, again, exciting. We had 54% five or more years below grade level based on this data point. And then we went to 49%. But what's exciting is you look at the green. So we went from 10% that were above grade level or at grade level to 15%. So we are using this some during our win time and to help the tier two students and then some of the English teachers. And then we also use it at our Saturday School Program.
So benchmark two tells us on this one test, not all the tests, that half of our students are five grades behind in reading?
Based on this assessment, yes.
Tier three students, correct, correct.
I have a, nevermind, go ahead.
This is our alternative school, which I was excited about. Again, this is just their data. So when you look at this, these are our students that are at DAP or Challenge. You have 78% were five years or more below. And then mid-year, they went to 46%. And I have to really applaud Challenge Academy because they have two intervention teachers that are really buying into the system and, you know, helping these students with their literacy. So that was exciting to me. I want to show you that. This is iReady, this is the math program that we bought, that I'll talk about it in a minute. And again, it's what the teachers are doing, are using as far as their curriculum resources. The students are working on iReady, the diagnostic. And it sets pathways in which the students need to work on, which skills. And then the teacher has the small group teacher table. So that shows you kind of what we did. And as far as the numbers went from 2%, 21 to 18. And again, when we look at that, we had more students take it the second time around.
Do I have a question? You said this is just one test that you guys look at. So are we seeing growth in all of the different tests that we look at? Are we, is it just?
Based on the data, yes, sir, because I showed you the interim data.
Yeah.
Right, so we had growth on that. And then we're looking at the Renaissance. And then as far as the benchmarks that they're doing.
So what we are seeing is all of the different tests that you guys look at data from, okay.
So you the multiple, multiple sources of data that we look at.
Got you.
And when we looked at our numbers back at the beginning, you might have noted the fourth grade was a little bit low. And so I'm absolutely going to take ownership for that. And I am very proud of the progress we made and seeing great things. But I'm also not going to say we don't have work to do because we do have work to do. And our fifth, fourth grade students are one that we definitely need to target. And the reason why, these are your fourth graders who were in first grade during COVID. So these are the students who either were remote learning, you know, they're the spring of first grade years where we shut down. So these students miss months of core instruction from a teacher face to face. And again, those foundational skills they miss was phonological awareness, learning how to take words apart, putting words together. Phonics, word studies, what does a sound is, you know, B make, and blending those together, and then print concepts. So we know our fourth graders had gaps and we knew we had to address that. So again, I dug a little more into this data because I figured y'all want to know about fourth grade. So just looking at the fourth grade, the red are the students who were tier two when we started the full intervention in fall of 2021. So in fall of 2021, our tier three students who we currently serve, these are the same exact students, when we tested them, were reading Kinder sixth grade, I mean, sorry, Kinder sixth month. So that was their beginning of the year reading proficiency level, beginning of second grade. So then we retest them, again, the same students, because I looked at the exact same students. I looked at their January data and they went from Kinder sixth month to second grade, seventh month. So again, we knew these students were behind, but they are making progress. So I wanted to show you that. And that's really us just honing in on those phonics skills that they missed. When you look at all the data for all fourth graders, again, the average reading growth is six months. So again, we're doubling what they would have, you know, as far as what they should be doing. So again, the students are growing. So this is just another data point for you to see.
Is the average like the state or is the fourth graders in the district?
This is just our fourth grader.
Our fourth graders.
That were served, that were identified in fall of 2021. When we started intervention district wide, it's the same exact students. I looked at those same names and pulled the data. Because I wanted to make sure those students were growing, right? We need to make sure they're getting the skills taught and that the deficits are getting plugged in and getting taught to make growth. If that makes sense.
But the average is non-tier three Waco ISD students as opposed to?
Well, I just said.
Who is the green?
Right, so the green is all second graders. So we're going to assume all second graders in Waco ISD can read at second grade level, at the beginning of second grade. That's what we would hope.
Okay.
Again, the fourth grade is the beginning of fourth grade.
Can I ask a?
Just standing. Doesn't mean everyone's there.
Right, that's what we would want. They should be, all fourth graders should be, at the beginning of fourth grade, should be at least reading at fourth grade.
Ms. Isaiah.
This goes back to what trustee Grant was asking a bit ago. So there's two years that have passed in these two data points. And these students have improved by two years, but they're still behind by two years.
Actually, one and a half because this is based on January. So it's, they're in.
All, right. Okay.
So they've grown two years, right, over two years and one month within a one and a half year period. And also remember that some of them were still, didn't come back to school that second year because you could have chosen to stay remote.
Just, can we go back one second? I just wanted to make sure I understood. So the, when we're looking at the beginning of the year, second grade, that is not the same group as the fourth grade. That's not the second graders once they were in fourth grade, they were test.
Same exact students.
Great, okay. So like.
Every second grade student was just the students that were identified.
Yeah.
In 2021 as being tier three.
And like trustee Isaiah said, so they will still, even though they grew two years, they will still be two years behind. So do you kind of explain to us what we do to get them on grade level even when?
They're still getting tier three, right? They're still getting the 30 minutes of, or the 45, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, four times or five times a week. They're still getting the tier two from their teacher, getting pulled back in small group instruction. And they're still getting the core. So what that point is, is to show you, yes, there was a gap, but the gaps grew smaller. So if they continue to get that tier three intervention and make progress, our goal is that there's not going to be a gap.
Actually, so you just stay in tier three until you get on a grade level?
Yes, sir, that's the goal. Or you go to tier two. If you've shown growth and you would benefit from just having your teacher pull you back and do small group instruction. The point of that was to show you that the students are growing, that I know that that was a deficit and that we continue to work on, but that they are showing growth based on the program. Other intervention focuses, again, we know we need to look at the foundational skills, deficits that were causing large, in large part, by the pandemic. We've embedded the additional phonics instruction that I talked about, just looking at the end of the year data. We had some deficits in phonics, so we built in the FNP phonics program. And again, the elementary sit teachers are being individually coached this month by an LLI expert. So we're having them come in because again, they're great at what they do, but they can be even greater, or good to great is what I compare it to. Jim Collins, good to great. And they're doing good things, but we need them great, right? We need them to be the best they can be. And then we have 13 of the 21, as we've talked about before, are in that reading recovery program. So they're taking graduate level courses on how they can become better reading instructors. In middle school, our big focus this year, or the thing that we changed again, based on the data, is last year, our middle school students went every other day because we didn't want them to lose an elective. So if I'm a student and I need tier three intervention for math, but I also need tier three intervention for reading, we didn't want to have to pull two electives. So what we did is we did Monday, Wednesdays, Tuesdays, Thursdays. Well, again, based on the data, those middle school students didn't show the growth. So this year, what we've done is every student goes five days a week. They go to math, the math lab. And if they need intervention, then we pull them out of that, their second block of their ELAR. So no students are losing electives, but we're also getting them five days of the week. What we'll do at the end of this year is we'll look at that data. And if they haven't shown the growth that we need them to show, then we'll have to consider, do they need 90 minutes of ELAR plus reading in math? You know, what do we need to do? And as far as high school, what we did, if y'all remember, we added the strategic math lab. So this is the first year that we've ever had this. This is, again, it's an elective course. So they're in Algebra I, but they're also in the strategic math lab. And so what these sit teachers do at this is they're working with the algebra teachers. They're looking at the TCA data, the interim data, and they're figuring out those algebra teaks that they need to be reteached. And then those prerequisite skills that correlate, which are mostly eighth grade teaks. So they're reteaching those. So that's been a huge success. So any freshman in eighth grade, when they were in eighth grade, if they didn't pass STAR math, they were placed in the strategic math lab. And for English, again, if they're in eighth grade, last year, if they didn't pass their eighth grade reading, then all ninth grade students were placed in the reading one lab. Then we have the reading two lab, which is for the students who didn't pass English one. And the other thing we did that I mentioned is we. That we didn't have last year. Last year, we chose to do after-school tutorials, hoping our students would come. And then we realized that didn't meet their needs, that we've got to meet them during the school day because we have students who have extracurricular activities. They work, they ride the bus home, they're taking care of their siblings. So we've got to provide the intervention during the day. So that's when we started the win time. And wins, we've seen some great strides in win. Again, we're going to continue to look at that, get feedback from the stakeholders and see how we can improve it. The other thing that we've done is we're making sure that the sit teachers are looking at the data. So they're looking at the talk curriculum assessments that the students are doing in the classroom. And they're drilling down to figure out which skills they need to reteach. So this is two of our professional development days that we pull the sit teachers in. And you can see they're going into Ediforia and they're pulling up their students' TCA and interim data. And then what they do is they take that data and they figure out what they need to teach in the sit classroom. Another big focus that we do is what's called explicit instruction. And that's led by Nina Archer. She's an expert in the field. And so there's 16 techniques. And so what we focused on, on this MPD was frequent responses. And so we're working with our teachers because we want our students frequently responding. We want that interaction. We want the students saying it and hearing it and seeing it to make sure they're actively engaged. And then I've kind of already talked about this, our big focus was our math. We knew that we needed to strengthen our math rigor. And so we purchased the iReady resources. And that's where the students go on, take that assessment, do the diagnostic pathway, and where the teacher hones in on the specific skills. We also did that for tier two because we felt like our tier two intervention that our teachers had needed an increase in the rigor. So that's it. Do you have any questions or I need to pause then? I'm not sure whether it's. So this is, do you have any questions first before we?
I have some questions. Thank you because we have a struggling reader and you've been a big help for us personally. When you say FNP, is that the Fontis Fennel?
No.
Okay. And is the curriculum, so the core teachers are doing tier one?
Yes, sir.
And is the curriculum the same for all three tiers?
No. So what we do is if they're not progressing in tier one, then we provide an additional resource for tier two and then something else for tier three. Because the theory is if they're not progressing, then they need something more intensive and more explicit. So for example, for reading, they do guided reading in tier two. But then in tier three, we build in the LLI. And for math, they use the Pearson. And then we purchased the iReady for tier two. And then for tier three, they do the math with iReady. So what we try to do is get more explicit and systematic in that. And then it really drills down the specific skill they need.
Okay. I had another question, too. Are, how much, how much phonics is built into that tier one instruction?
And it's a part of, and Dr. Korn was not here, but they have basically a map of how much they have to teach or what they have to teach, an embedded kind of sequence. And so it's embedded within that sequence. It's many minutes, I can't tell you the specific minutes, but I'm sure we could get to kind of the scheme of what they're, that they do as far as the core.
We purchased a curriculum, we purchased an additional phonics curriculum to make sure we beefed that up for core instruction.
And Donna Trigg's been working with the teachers on that. And they've had lots of the win. Warren Associates have come in and done literacy training over that.
Okay. I asked my wife, but she's doesn't at the end of the day, so.
We've got resources, we can get you some answers.
And do we use decodable books or just the leveled readers for the students? I've just, I mean, you know our situation with our son. And we've had more success since we've been working with them lately with decodable books?
So when we, when we do LLI, it's leveled books based on the BASS testing. But then they're incorporating, so it's just, it's a fun book. It's great to look at as far as literacy. But then they're embedding the phonics, the word study, the word works within that book. So it's important that we give them a kind of a love for literacy. So that's why we use real kind of fun, not just decodable, you know, Bob books that break it down, but have the pictures and the words and the meanings and the story behind it. But then they're embedding the phonics in that. So if the student comes to a word they can't read, then let's take that word apart. What do we do? And then they're using, you know, the magnetic letters and breaking that word apart and putting it together.
Thank you for honing in so tightly and bringing such good data. It helps us to see great progress, especially as the tier three students are spending more time in lessons and the growth. But it also helps us to tell the story of what's happening, right? And the good things that are coming from your work and students and teachers and interventions. Thank you.
I have to say I have a great team. Penny Graber was here. And then I have Rose Johnson, and then of course, Dr. Cannon and your support, and Dr. Korn Blooms to actually implement the systems that we needed to, to make the progress and to make sure it's equitable for every student. Because every student deserves the chance to get the, you know, the support. And so I have a video, I hope it works. But, you know, I can stand up here all day and show you data and talk to you about what the great things I think is going on. But I wanted you to hear from the students and the teachers. So what we did is we, with the help of communications, interviewed or talked to Ms. Lisa Ward, she's at South Waco. And then they went to talk to Ms. Jennifer Young at Tennyson and then Ms. Lynn Saborn at Waco High. And so, yeah, watch this, hopefully it'll work. Oh, sorry.
Miss Word Class helps me by reading and we do fun activities. And we read a new book and an old book. And then we write about the book. And then it's amazing. It helps me to read better to my big brother and my little brother. And my grades have gone up since I've been in Miss Words Class. And I feel excited going to Miss Words Class because she makes me happy.
This intervention program is so important to my students because it allows me to pull students in homogeneous groups to work on activities that they are having trouble with. I'm able to build a relationship with those students and allow them to be vulnerable and willing to participate in the activities. I'm able to use data, anecdotal data, RIN data, running records, to be able to see where the kids are and to meet them there and move them forward. The LLI lessons provide the instruction that I use to help the kids with reading, comprehension, writing, and foundational skills. During the fall semester, I service 15 first graders. All of those students were tier three students. At the end, after all the testing was done, eight of those students moved from tier three to tier two and will not be serviced anymore. So they will now stay in their classrooms. So that, that's a great accomplishment. Over half of my kids moving from tier three to tier two.
I like the intervention class because we don't have more than 15 students, which allows us to have more one-on-one time for a teacher and student. It allows us to have small groups. This promotes a safe environment for kids to ask questions they wouldn't typically ask in a larger classroom. This intervention class allows us to reach the students that are struggling with math. It helps them be able to build, well, it helps us be able to build a unique plan for them to fill the gaps that they have. So each child has a different program within the iReady application that we're using that was programmed just for them off of a diagnostic test. And it helps fill those gaps. We then, as teachers, come in and help them get to that grade level that they're currently at, whether it's sixth, seventh, or eighth grade. My greatest successes, I've been teaching for three years, seventh grade math in a regular classroom, coming into an intervention classroom. The greatest success I see is when, and we know that tests don't matter in the long run, but when you see a student come up to you and say, I've passed a test, and all of a sudden, now they're passing more tests, it means something to them because now they feel like they're not failures. And then you start to see lifelong learners. And to me, that is the greatest success, when they come in and they love to learn.
She puts it in terms where I can understand a lot because, I mean, it helps me really like, like advance more in like all my other classes, not just math in particular. But like, my grades have changed a lot from me being just in here because she just makes it a lot more easier for the learning experience. The Shung sit class helps me understand in better terms. Like, it's a lot easier for me for the experience.
She puts it in words that I can actually understand. Most of the time, when I'm in like my normal math class, I can't understand things as much as she puts it into words.
This intervention class is so important because it's an intimate group. It's a smaller group where you give more one-on-one or small group attention to these kiddos. And based on the research that's been given through Reading Plus, it shows where it helps the students really hone in on the skills that they may be struggling on. Some of my greatest successes is being able to reach students that are sometimes unreachable because of the lack of confidence that they may have. Reading can be very intimidating. And being able to work one-on-one and see the successes of growth across the board and being able to let the kids thrive off of each other and see what good can come from reading when given the chance. You definitely have to work on conditioning. And these kids don't have a love for that reading. And so when they see the conditioning is worth it, because what they get out of it, it's a win-win situation.
But some of our reading classes have been helping me by staying focused, staying straight, staying head on my shoulders. I've been growing a lot since I've been in this class, since last year.
So again, I just wanted you to hear from the students and the teachers. And I promise I didn't have them rehearse what they were going to say. Reiterated or reported every aspect and goal that we have for this program. So again, thank you, thank you for the support. And again, we're seeing lots of growth and it's just not about the data, but it's what about what you saw from the students, you know? It makes them happy, they feel loved and they feel successful. So, I mean, that's, that's the biggest win for me is because these students have felt successful and they never felt successful in their school career because they've been behind. So do you have any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Parnell. I was thinking about this and I was like, wow, 12 years ago, I was my RTI. I did for tier one, tier two, and tier three intervention. So just the service that you guys help our teachers with and kind of the small group servicing the tier three, I think, is much needed. And I think it really is about that. It's about convincing students that they can do it and providing that individualized instruction. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all that hard work. Appreciate it. We're going to take a five-minute stretch break because I have a feeling Ms. Bells is going to be an interesting presentation that we might have some questions. So we're just going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll come right back. We're going to move on to agenda item number 10 at review. Discuss changes to state accountability system. Wonderful state, who always changes our accountability system. Ms. Bell, please help us.
Isn't this what everybody wants to talk about, eight o'clock at night?
Eight o'clock at night?
Okay, before I start my part, I want to just piggyback off of what Ms. Parnell presented to you. And I wanted to share with you that our systems alignment, so the students are not overtested to get all these data points. When we're taking data for. When we're taking data for TIA, when we're taking data for classroom growth, when we're taking it to find the skills, Renaissance, all of these are the same sources. We use extra pieces of data, but we're not test, because we have different ways of using data, doesn't mean we're testing the kids eight or nine times a week. We are using that same data and getting focused with it. And last year, when I presented to you our success on growth, I think now you're seeing that the growth accelerating at the elementary, middle school level means that we will have that more fluid system and we'll always have children who have more needs. But the more that our tier one gets stronger off of data, the more that the tier two supports are there and teachers are stronger, then the tier three teachers are amazing. They really are a great group of teachers. So all of the systems flowing together, I just wanted to reassure you that we're collecting data as we need to and using it in a variety of ways to get to instruction, not overtesting. So what I'm about to present to you, these are TEA slides with the exception of one or two because I feel like I should present straight from the horse's mouth about changes. So this year for accountability, the first piece to know is that we are changing the accountability system. TEA is working on finalizing how we will be rated this year. So it's not been clear since the beginning of the year. It's become clear now January, February, so I can bring to you that where we're going to be. But it's not been clear all year. So all the growth and things we've been doing is still moving towards that domain two, that growth from like before and that piece for domain three. Also, please note that the tests are changing this year. So, and we will see that TEA is also changing the requirements for CCMR. So all of these things are changing. And so our rating this year is something I can explain a bit to you now, but it has not been finalized and it should be finalized within a few months when the manual comes out. So this still taking feedback on the system will be rated for in the fall. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I just. Did I hear you correctly that they're changing the questioning? They're changing the test?
The test itself. It's STAR 2.0. Yes, ma'am.
Did they do any field test questions as last year?
Yes. The past few years, they've done field-tested questions. And the interim tests that the students take is on exactly the same platform as the STAR test. And it's questions that have been field-tested exactly the same way as STAR, except they've never been on STAR. There, there are questions that, that haven't been used before, but they have been tested and vetted the same exact way a STAR test is.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the methodology for ratings is changing too, which is what?
Yes, yes.
So TEA. It's going to hit hard on.
Oh, yeah. TEA has provided public updates. So that's why I felt like pulling TEA slides for you shows you that this is the things that they have done. They represent final decisions. There are some things they're still looking at, but there's an overall set. So as we go along, if you're wondering if something's final, I'll kind of let you know. So this is TEA's first slide and this slide is TEA's why. Why are we changing the system? Because it's been in place for five years. So legislatively, the commissioners should periodically review the system. And so as they do so at TEA, these are the four things that they keep in mind as their commitments. Ratings reflect better of achievement or progress. And progress is what we're working on first as a district, which is growth, moving towards that achievement. Multiple measures to evaluate a campus so that everybody has that opportunity to get an A. Number three, ratings are based on defined criteria, not fixed distribution. So what that means is they don't wait till everybody has data at the end of the year and make a bell curve. And you don't know if you're going to be an A or an F. They create the standard and then everybody theoretically, every single school in the state of Texas can be an A because we know what the goal is to be an A. So someone else's performance does not relate to ours because it's not a bell curve each year. And then their system design and cut points remain static. This is TEA's how. So as they go through, they are looking at rigor for students, which means that they lift up some of the goals. They raise them up, a fair for schools to make it mathematically possible for everybody to be an A. So again, that's why it's not a bell curve created from live data. They create the standard and everybody knows exactly what it takes to get an A or B. And then transparent to the public is the website I've shown you before, where you can go and look at all of the data for the campus. And if you really did a deep dive, there's all the data in there, including the taper data that I present to you and even more on that. They're looking to continuously improve. So this is TEA's thought process when they create the cuts for an A. So it is not a system where I have to get like a 90% of my kids to do this to get an A. It's I get a certain number and that number is scaled up to be an A. So the way that I explain this is, once upon a time Denise took pre-calculus and I had a teacher who curved the grade. And I was a really good math student, or so I thought, and I had twenties and thirties and I was struggling. And suddenly on my report card, there was a 90. So the grades were curved, right? I have no idea the methodology. So he knew his methodology, but these are curved grades. So it might strike you as odd if I say a 60 is an A, but the 60 is a data point that's not, it's not a perfect correlation of percents. So the scales are the things that they look at. And you'll notice on the left, TEA says that an A represents excellence. It's the long-term goal. A C represents what is the average baseline. So they collect the data, they create the cuts. By the way, I still don't know pre-cal.
But statistics you did do okay in. Okay, yes, yes. I got that.
I have a question and you're probably going to answer this as you go, but
Yes.
will we still be able to compare year over year? Test scores?
Year to year from this year on, yes.
But not? This is where five years ago and this is where we're?
For the ratings of the campuses, you really won't be able to do that because it will be different. But if we're talking about the kid growth piece, yes, year to year, we can compare on a kid level. But I'm going to show you that what it takes to get an A in CCMR is 20 points higher than it was last year. So really, so it really isn't the same system for getting it. How they created the cuts for STAR is they kept the same data from when they had done it back in 2017 because they ran all the data with COVIDs in it and they said it really is the same. So they left the cuts the same. STAR growth is the way growth is calculated at a kid level will change, but the methodology will be the same. It will be a certain percent of kids showing growth, which means a student could still not pass, but they could show growth and that's what we use for the interims. Graduation rate has actually gone up in the state of Texas over the past five to 10 years. So they're going to lift that up. And that one scales interestingly, like if you have 90% of your kids graduate, it scales to a 65. It scales backwards and pulls back. So that one is one where we have to keep on growing in the 90s to climb up. And then CCMR is TEA saying in this piece here that they got feedback that 90 should be an A. 90% of the kids are CCMR ready that actually graduate. And when they ran the data, it wasn't holding up, so they set the cut at 65 for an A, 65% of the kids. And now that they've done it again, the, through modeling, it's now 88%. So the cut went from 65% of your kids last year showing CCMR would have been an A. And this year it will be 88% of your kids. Please remember, this is the class of 2022. So there's nothing we could have done to changed it and we were not aware of that change when we had that class. Before I show you TEA's timeline for when they're going to actually release ratings, I wanted to share with you the delay of STAR scores. Because the test is changing, it will have to go through a process to create scale scores. So you can see that we're going to get some preliminary data. So we can have a guesstimate of where a student is in May, but you can see that the final reports and families will receive their, their grades for their children in August. August 11th and then August 16th is when the data will be final.
Ms. Bell, I'm sorry.
Yes?
I have a question because I know that there are certain grade levels that are, you have to pass STAR in order to kind of be promoted. How does this affect that?
So that's no longer in place. SSI is no longer in place for grades five and eight. The state got less legislative session. That went away because House Bill 4545 makes us monitor every kid at every grade level. So the only ones who face promotion issues are the high schoolers passing their five EOCs by the time they're ready to graduate. It's, they're the only ones where it has that effect.
Okay.
House Bill 4545 is one of the hot topics for the legislative session also in relation to teacher satisfaction and the requirements that were put on during the last legislative session. Representative Buckley over in Colleen is working on a bill that will change some of those requirements. So I think, you know, we're likely to see all kinds of changes in this legislative session. It's really to be seen. But I just thought I'd throw that in there. Those are, there are several things that we're, we're going to be listening for during this session. That's going to be one of them.
Okay. And I wanted to give you these dates because I know that, you know, you might have families ask, hey, when are we going to get our kids' scores? But really the family portal, the soonest a parent will see anything is on June 30th. But they're not going to see the full final score for their child with feedback until August 11th. And that's for EOC and you can see for the grade three through eight. So this is TEA's timeline then of rating districts. And so the manual is currently being written. And in the spring, about a month from now, TEA will release what's called a what-if analysis. What if they took this year's cuts and applied it to last year's data? What would the schools be? So that seems helpful in theory, but it actually, the changes, it's, they're, they're using last year's CCMR data. And we've actually improved our CCMR data, so they don't have that yet. So it's going to give us a sense of where we are, but it's just going to be sort of a, an idea because it's going to use for the high schools, 60% of that data is old, right? Because CCMR and graduation rate. And with the test changing, we're not sure how that'll impact the achievement scores. But they will release it in TEAL and then they will release it publicly in case you get questions about that. It's just a modeling of the new cuts off of old data. They'll release the manuals sometime, final manuals sometime in the summer. And then in September is when we will get ratings sometime in September. The dates, I put this slide in, even though it says feedback through February 1st, I wanted to show you that they've been taking feedback all the way up into this time. But it also shows you that, that that's the lag, that in all the past years, we've had the final ratings in August at least. In this case, we're not going to get, we're going to get the final manual, but we're not going to get the manual applied and scores until September. Not, there's no particular date in September yet. The A through F for fresh, the top 10 pieces there were the things they began working on when they began working in June on this. And the three after are things that were added later. So the ones in red are things that TEA is still looking at and I'll touch on, but they're not set yet. The decisions for one through 10 are pretty determined. So 11, giving, giving high schools credit for Algebra I. If a student takes Algebra I in eighth grade, the law requires that they have a math score at high school. They use the SAT scores for those students as STAR equivalents with approaches, meets, and masters. And they do that in their senior year. So that data, they're looking at a swap out possibly. Creating an incentive for early graduation. We do get a good amount of kids that are early graduation, but this is going to be early graduation with certain criteria. This isn't going to be you're done with 22 credits and five tests and we'll give the school credit for graduating you. There's going to be things the kids have to do in order for us to get credit for that. And then the overall ratings better aligning with Senate Bill 1365, which talks about when you have Ds and Fs in different domains. They're going to cap the letter grade you can get overall as a campus if you have a certain amount of Ds or Fs in your domains. So commitment one, number one, is the better of achievement or progress. So the good news for us is that this hasn't changed. There are three domains. They are the same domains, pretty much the same content. Student achievement and school progress, whatever our final grade, the campus's final grade is, will be the better of student achievement or school progress. So that was kept in. And if you remember, domain two was our strength in the past. Domain three, closing the gaps, will be 30%. But I want to remind you that domain three, closing the gaps, is 100% of a school's federal rating. And so since it, that's where school improvement comes from, comes from that domain three. So we're not quite sure what school improvement will look like with the ratings being delayed till September. This is the basics for you. The elementaries, it's STAR scores, sliced and diced in different ways, but it's STAR scores. For middle schools, same way, it's STAR scores. But for our high schools and K-12, it's 40% STAR, 40% college career military ready. And I put a reminder there for you. This is going to be based on the 2022 graduates, not this year's 2023 graduates. And then 20% is the graduation rate for the class of 2022 or the class of 2021 or the class of 2020 because we get the better of the four-year, five-year, or six-year rate. But that's as far back as it goes. On this side I put for you, the only changes in domain one is that the STAR test format itself will change. There are changes to the CCMR. And there are changes to the scale score for CCMR and graduation. Both went up pretty considerably. And the scaling scores for graduation rate in CCMR, the change is that they are going up for us, for everyone, but. Domain two, school progress is a part A and a part B. Part A is academic growth. The first bullet tells you what that will be. That will be the number of students that grew at least one year academically. And they're going to give us bonus points, I'll tell you about in a little bit, for kids that are what's called accelerated in their growth. And we actually had really good data on that last year, even though we weren't trying for that measure. Our other work on growth actually shows that we're primed for that piece. The other part is part B called relative performance. And that's the achievement of students relative to campuses with the same economically disadvantaged percentages. So it's best of, best of, right? Domain one is or two, but in domain two, there's part A or part B. So it's a, it's meant to be a play to your strengths system. And then domain three is just 30%. So growth, this is where growth changes. It was, and what I call magic numbers to teachers. It was a specific number every kid had to have. Their scale score had to go up by 85 points. So that was easy for us to set goals because we just took the kid's last scale score, added 85 points, and we knew where we had to get them to. This is different. This pushes a little more because English one and English two, for example, the progress measure was zero. You just had to make the same score from English one to English two. But that doesn't really push a kid forward to the passing that they need if they're a retester. So this is going to measure annual growth and then give us credit for what's called accelerated learning. So the table you see is called a transition table. And what it's going to do is it's going to give us one point per kid. So no student out, no student's growth outweighs anybody else's. And what they do is the students would make a growth from time to time, right? The student would, if they were low, did not meet, and they still don't pass, they're still a did not meets, but they fall into the high did not meet area, we get a point for them because it means they're making a year's worth of growth. If a student is low approaches, if they stay, as long as they stay approaches, we get a half point. But if they move up to high approaches, we get a whole point for them. So that's pushing them towards, what I had once explained to you about, it's all pushing towards the EOCs, excellence on the EOCs. You will notice there's a little bit of a give in meets. So a student doesn't have to go from meets to masters. A student can stay meets, which means they have mastered grade level, they've met grade level, and we get one point for them. So that's a little bit of a give. So our numerator, our denominator is the easiest ones. How many tests we had that qualified for growth? The numerator is how many points we got. And every kid, every kid's tests, because they take two, every kid's test is worth a point at most. But then we get the accelerated learning, which is the chart on the other side. So these are bonus points added to the numerator, which lifts up the percent. So if you look, it's any kid who went from did not meets to any level, we get an extra point for that kid. So if Denise went from low did not meets to approach, low approaches, right? I get a point. You get a point for me for growth. But I went from in one year, not passing to passing, you get a second point for me. And I'm not twice in the numerator. I'm one kid that just gave you two points. So when I looked back, I put that little box on there for you because we didn't exactly try to get this outcome. I had explained to you before, we're just growth for everybody, whatever the growth is. But if you look, we weren't trying for it, but we're definitely primed for it. In math, 33% of the kids who failed In math, 33% of the kids who failed in 2021 passed with approaches or higher in 2022. Some went as high from did not meets to meets and masters. Same thing for RLA. And this is third grade all the way up, I'm sorry, fourth grade, all the way up to the EOC's. So a third of the kids were already doing this by just having that growth philosophy. So now that we know what each student needs, we can continue to push them further.
But they do, they do not meet.
No, they do not. It's one point. That's a rare kid. I'd like to meet that kid. Usually the kid will tell me they slept one year and they didn't the other, but, but you can see the growth, Ms. Parnell said, yes, we've had students who've actually plugged in. And once they start to feel success, like any person, they start to accelerate pretty quickly, yes. But we would get two points for that kid technically because they went from the did not meets to, to meets, but they would also get the one for masters. Originally, TEA had it where it was four points for a kid like that, but then everybody was saying you're turning one kid into more valuable than another. And then you're, sometimes you might be tempted to push a kid too hard to get four points. We wanted to keep it even. Okay? The other part of domain two is relative performance. So this is where they create a graph using the student achievement pieces, and they do the economically disadvantaged, and they line it all up, and they create cuts. So they're going to redo the cuts because the ECODIS percent has kind of moved around since COVID, but they'll create cuts for us. So they would look at my score for student achievement. If it was like 80, but my ECODIS is 10%, then it's going to be a lot harder for me to get an A in that area. So this one's the buffer for campuses that have high percentages of students who are economically disadvantaged. And so it's just another piece. This one is actually helpful for our two high schools, right? Because they use the CCMR and the STAR as the measure and put it with the ECODIS. And both our high schools are at 88% ECODIS. CCMR updates for you. The first is that they want to incorporate, and I'm going to explain a little bit, programs of study. So right now, we get credit, a student earns an industry-based certification from a set list, we get the point. This year, we will get the point. There'll be no other caveats to that, whatever the student earned. But what will fold in over time with our graduating classes is they not only have to have the certification, they have to have a certain number of courses in CTE to match exactly that particular certification. And so you'll see, I'll show you in a second, the, the timeline for that. Military enlistment has come back. I'll show you the quality, the qualifications, and we already have that set up, but that can't, that won't be for this year. There's no way for us to get data on the class of 2022. So the class of 2023 will collect their data for military enlistment and will submit that to TEA. And then they wanted to look at evidence, notice that we're evaluating, they want to look at evidence of college readiness and what's called persistence. So when TEA looked at the, the college testing, the dual credit, all those things, they were kind of holding us accountable for kids staying in college. But once we get past the door and the stage, that's very hard. So they want to examine more data. So the next five years, when we're talking about the next accountability system update, they'll probably push us a little more on kids staying in college and in certification programs and in technical schools than right now. But we kept things the same for factors that we can actually control. Also, the continuing to, they want to analyze the different industry certs. I am super proud to tell you that there are some industry-based certifications that do not need classes to be able to pass. You chew to the kids a little bit and they pass the class, so they get a Google Analytics or Adobe, something like that. So those are phasing out. So you will not get credit for those. We've not done that. So when we look at our industry-based certifications, we were not doing ones that didn't need the coursework. We were doing ones in CTE that required at least a class or two of coursework. So I'm pretty proud to say that because it means that this change by TEA will affect some districts drastically because that's what they were having students do, not us. We were going for, we need you to have the coursework and the certification for that long-term. Our partnerships are pretty strong with TSTC and other areas. So that's not going to affect us, but it is a change for districts. There's no change to using AP courses and no change for what's called the college prep class. So for a student to be CCMR ready, they have to show they're ready in reading and math, both on some kind of college exam, or they take the college prep class. So me and my pre-cal, we might not have had a good SAT math score, right? But I got a great SAT reading score. I scored what the colleges want, they set the mark. And then I score on TSI, the math, put it together, Denise is CCMR ready. But if I score high on the reading and I'm struggling in the math, I can take at high school, the class that is called college prep, and I will be CCMR ready. So what college prep is, we've all known people who've gone off to college and had, and took the Accuplacer and had to take remedial math or reading courses to get into actual credited courses. So, and they pay for that. In the college prep class, we're doing it at high school for free. It's their fourth English or their fourth math because that's what they need based on the data. But the really nice part is we have a written agreement with MCC as part of this class where the kid can go to MCC if they pass the class. They can go to MCC for one year and it's, it's a waiver for TSI. And if they go and they're successful, they never have to take the TSI for MCC. They can continue moving on. So we've enrolled quite a few students in college prep mainly because it's what they need, right? Because we're giving them the class for free and remediating them and five days a week and giving them all the, the pieces that we talk about. So in a way, it's its own tier three, tier two for kids who are still struggling at the end. We don't want to just send them on. We want to be able to give them that shot. So again, they take the college prep class, we get credit for accountability, but the kid gets a year waiver on having to pass that TSI test to stay in college. And I think for some of our kids, that's going to be a really big boost.
A quick question.
Yeah.
Is the number of certifications pretty equitable based on whatever career path the kid chooses? I mean, is there more certifications available?
In certain areas, I mean, at Guam and Guaca, they kind of vary their paths. So the kids can have multiple choices. Or at Guaca, they can do the CNA, but they can also do pharmaceutical. So it just depends. TEA has created the CTE programs of study now, and that's how we're funded for CTE. And so those, they're going to take their pathways and match them to certifications. And so for Waco ISD, all of our pathways lead to a certification. That, that was a commitment that before with Ms. McEthan and continuing out Ms. Exinean, that irregardless of this piece, that was our mission. The point was to have that certification at the end, or at least the ability to take and pass the certification. Did that answer? Okay. This is just the statewide data for CCMR to show you that the, if you'll notice, the college testing kind of dipped down for the entire state. Dual credit went up somewhat, AP remained the same. So our statistics look similar, except you see the increase in college prep courses. That's what you would see in ours when, when you look at that towards the end of the year. Programs of study, I put the slide in here for you just to explain what it is. Okay? So a concentrator is a kid who earned the certification and has two or more CTE in a certain program of study. Again, those were created by TEA, not Waco ISD. Then completer is a kid who's got three or more CTE for four credits with a program of study. That matters because of the next slide. So for the graduating class, for this year's ratings, the graduating class of 2022, it's just if they got an industry-based certification because we were not enrolling them in classes with the mind to match those two things. Next year's ratings, the graduating class of 2023, the ratings for August 2024, those kids, if they have a certification, they'll have to have at least one Level 2 class, which is like a sophomore-level class, not the higher-end classes. So that's phasing it in because right now, those students are juniors. We would only have one year to really shape up what they take next year, and we're not going to jam kids into CTE classes so that we can get a cert, you know, a CCMR piece. We want the kids to finish their high school experience. But the graduating class of 2024 is our 2025 ratings. And that's where we're going to have to have concentrators. So the juniors are going to have to have two or more credits. And then the class of 2025 forward, the kids are going to have to be a completer, three or more courses. Otherwise, they can get the certification, but we will not get CCMR credit for them because they did not complete the courses. So that's still under debate because that's a few years away, and so it's changeable, but that's the path TEA is moving on. And I put the little box caveat in there for you. They're taking away and capping what's called the sunsetting industry cert. So if, if more than a certain percent of your graduating class had one of the certs that's going away, you can only get credit for 20% of them. So if you're 50% of your class had that, you can only get credit for 20%. But that cap, you know, I get very excited on webinars when I hear it, but that cap does not affect us at all. We have double and triple-checked. We do not offer any cert that does not have matching classes with it. So we're right on the path to just continue. So we can focus on kids passing the certifications at a higher rate and not switching. Military enlistment, starting with the class of 2023 this year, they'll ask us to submit in the spring of 2024. So we had to find a place to store these. They'll ask us to submit a completed DD for, DD form four. So we have to have the student and the recruiter get us that. We have two students already who have this form turned in. So we already created a process to collect the forms so that when TEA is ready for us to submit them in the spring of '24, they're all compiled in one place for students. CCMR scaling, this is where it will be a big change for us. So an increase to CCMR performance over the last few years means instead of a 65 being an A, it's now a C. And the cut for an A is an 88%. So you can see the cut points were released and we, we know these cuts, so I have the next slide for you. If I told you right now, my estimate is that the two high schools are between 59 to 61%. If you look in 2022 on the right at the high schools, 59 to 61% would have gotten them an A in this area. So that's what we were striving for because it's what we knew. Not that we were setting the bar low, but just we were trying to get up to where we were because it had dropped down. But now in 2023, that cut will make us close to a C. And there's not much we can do about that number because it's the graduates of 2022. So there will be a drop that you will see in the CCMR ratings, but I want to assure you, it's not the raw data. We have more kids getting CCMR. The percentage is higher, but TEA lifted the cut by 20 points plus. So that's going to make it harder for us to get towards the A, but we will continue to strive that way and make our improvements for the classes. It's just going to take a couple of years because you can't suddenly tell the class of 2023 that we need to do these changes for them just to get more. We want kids to, to be where they are.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How, how many classes are they taking now if they're getting the certifications?
Um, I've looked at, it's at least two to three. It's at least two to three. So it depends on, students have the right to change their mind. So if I start out my freshman year doing Principles of Transportation because I want to do cars, right, my four-year plan, thinks I'm going to automotive, practicum of transportation. But in my sophomore year, I realized that wasn't really what I was thinking it was, right? It's, it's not, because they have to do a lot of programming and stuff. So I want to switch and I think I'd like to go to Guam, I'd like to go to Welding. So Dr. Concanon's philosophy has always been let the kids explore high school. So we're not going to keep the kid in transportation for four classes. That's kind of the argument against that concentrator, that you're locking a high schooler into staying there for your purposes of CCMR. So we want to find the other ways to get them CCMR so that we're not stuck on that. But on average, the kids have at least two classes, and I've seen kids go straight to doing the high practicum audiovisual and get a certification.
Okay. So there's no prerequisites to get those, into those certification level courses? There's no prerequisite classes that they have to take before?
No. And we have the deans of CTE at every campus, at Guaca, Guam, PTech, and Waco High University. And anytime a kid wants to change, they come right into the conversation and talk to the kid about the changes, you know? And to make sure the kid's not like, oh, I hate my friends this week, I want to switch, you know? To make sure that they're thinking about it and thinking about their career. That's what we want for our kids. So we have kids who don't go to Guaca until their senior year. And then we have kids who thought they wanted to go to Guaca, and the minute they start seeing blood and stuff, it's like, wait a minute, that was too much, not what I thought, right? So they have, but the nice part of what I tell kids is, the nice part about that is how many people change their life path after high school. The kids get to play around with, I think I want to do this, and then find out it was or wasn't what they thought. So, so we will take a hit in CCMR, but I want to reassure you that the CCMR numbers are actually up for the class of 2022, and they're even better right now for the class of 2023. So we will strive for the 88, but it's going to have an effect on the high school's rating, but it's also going to have an effect on the district's rating. Closing the gaps, domain three is going to be a little bit different. This is our federal one. So they're going to decrease the number of student groups, and they're going to give us points per target instead of yeses and nos. Okay? So you can see as a large district, this system actually penalized us. Because if a student was a Hispanic student who was ESL and homeless, and they were special education, let us say, that student is in four different categories, sheerly because of size, sheerly because of the size of our district. So tiny districts didn't have enough kids to make a group. So the first thing they did was they lowered the number. So 10 kids in a group, you get rated on that group. And they combined, this makes me very excited, I know, but that high focus group is called a supergroup. And it's the combination, it's all the ECODIS kids, all the emergent bilingual kids, all the special education kids, and all the highly mobile, which is a phrase for homeless students, together. So if a kid is more than one of those things, they only rate against the district once. So we're not taking as many hits as we were before simply because we have a lovely variety of children, right? We were just getting hit by sheer numbers. So pulling that together, they're still going to give us the data. So the special ed department is still going to look at their numbers and strive, but by putting it together, it's just kind of showing us, it's, it's kind of bringing it home to exactly who we need to focus on. For ethnicity groups, it'll be whoever our two lowest performing groups were at the campus from last year. So this is kind of a live measure. But when I did this with all the campuses, it turned out to be two out of the three they're already rated on, right? Tended to be African-American and Hispanic. So now they have to improve those numbers. And lowest performing doesn't mean low performing. It doesn't mean that they were below standard. Lowest performing means out of all the ones you qualified for, which two are the lowest? You need to work on that. You need to lift those groups back up and keep moving forward. Yeah. So one campus would get an all students, two ethnicities, the high focus, former special education students, and continuously enrolled students.
You just have to be one of those things to be in that high focus group.
Yep. But you could be four of those things and just be one student in the high focus group. Oh, yeah. That makes me very happy. But for smaller districts, you lower the number to 10 and you cluster the groups together. So you can see why it's, it's different perspective for different districts, but it really was, the commissioner honored the fact that it really was a bias towards us that simply because we had students of so many needs and ethnicities, we were counting all over the place. And so that's to even the playing field between us and other districts. We will get a system of points, zero to four points per target. The long-term target is the target for 2037. The interim target is the target set right now until the year 2027. And they actually made different charts. So before, it was one chart of the same goals for every school type, whether you were in elementary school or a high school. There's three charts now, one for elementary, one for middle, one for high school. That's based on the data of those groups. So I haven't had a chance to dig into those because they only came out a couple of weeks ago, but the points towards, we had a lot of campuses where they were like two or three percentage points away from hitting the target. So this system allows us to push our campuses, to say it's not enough just to get this mark now to get your four points. We got to keep moving. You've got to be ahead of what the kids need now. We want them to be moving forward. Okay? So there's what it'll look like, zero to four points per target. That's a lot less data to look at on closing the gaps. So going from 71 possible groups to 23. This is the biggest change, is going to be the district rating. So the district will no longer get a separate rating. The district, the, the The district, the, the concern the commissioner had is the disconnect between district ratings and their campus ratings. So you're looking at two examples that he shared of two different districts. One rated a B, but it had three D campuses and three C campuses, and one was rated an A with a C and a B campus. And that's because the data was pretty much mimicking the high school data when you put it together. So TEA is proposing, but this is pretty much a set decision by the commissioner that it is going to be a weighted average. And so depending on the amount of students at the campus, they will do a weighted average of how many points they contribute to that domain, and then that's the district score. So you can see here, Campus One has its enrollment, that was its score, but it is weighted because that's its weight in the district's overall three through 12 enrollment, and then that's how many points you get. TEA was asked why K through two is not included in this data, and yet nine through 12 is, and not every ninth through 12 grader tests all the time. The first is because there are a lot of pre-K to two campuses or pre-KK campuses. Also, those students aren't tested in the data that's actually used in the campus rating, except in Telpass, so it seemed not as beneficial. But the caveat for nine to 12 is every day they're working on graduating and CCMR. So what that shapes up for Waco ISD are these percentages. So Waco High will be 20% of the district's overall grade for each domain. University will be 17%. Tennyson is at 9.8. Chavez is at 8.9. Indian Springs and Carver are currently reported out as two separate campuses, but I did put in there that next year for the 2023-24 school year, they will be one campus together. So if we had combined them now, enrollment changes, but it's not going to move those top five that much. No one's going to knock Waco High out simply because of the amount of students that they have for the contribution to the overall rating. So what they'll do is they will line up all of the domain one scores, okay? And by the, I'll go back to this slide, and by the weights and what were their scores, and then we would get a set of points which would add up to that overall rating. But we would still get best of domain, for our final grade, best of domain one or two, and in domain two, best of two A or two B, whatever that turns out to be.
Did your curiosity project?
We would be one point less than we were last year. Because our CCMR was not high. So that overinflation of the CCMR by some districts is the reason why they have an A and they're going to come down because the high school's ratings are going to come down because you raised the CCMR part 20 points. So it's going to shift it. But the minute I did this, I did the next step. And actually, the elementaries carried us in domain three because 50% of their domain three is growth. But for the high schools, 50% of their domain three is kids scoring meats or better on English and algebra. And you can see, we have a lot of remediation in those areas, so the high schools are not hitting those targets yet, but the elementaries knocked it out of the park, and the middle schools did really good improving on growth. So because we were averaging everybody together, it lifted the growth that the kids were doing in K through eight lifted us and compensated for the CCMR part of it. For AEA, the reason I added this is Brazos will now be rated in a different way, same philosophy with three domains, except it's going to honor the fact that their student clientele are dropouts. So for their STAR, it's how many tests do they take and they get points per level. That's different than the, the traditional campuses, but it honors the fact that typically they have retesters, students who have taken it many times. So if they get a master's or a meat, that extra point is for them. For CCMR, they're going to get their annual graduates, whoever graduates that year, but then they'll get previous dropouts, which you can also see, they don't get a graduation rate any longer. They will get what's called a completion rate. The completion rate is the number of kids in a particular graduating class, a cohort, is the denominator. But the numerator is how many kids either graduated or enrolled at Brazos for their fifth year within the first month of school. As long as they're enrolled at Brazos and working, they get credit as though they were a graduate. And now, if they're a previous dropout at any point, they get a bonus point. So we do have a few students, for example, who are like the class of 2021. The other day, they graduated a student who was the class of 2017. So it kind of honors the work that they do when someone is one or two credits off or a test off and they graduate them. That's kind of what they're there for, is that dropout recovery. But it also counts if a kid dropped out from Waco High in their sophomore year, shows up a year and a half later and wants to come back and goes to Brazos. They were calculated as a dropout at some point, but they come back and finish at Brazos. Brazos would get credit for them. Growth, they will get growth, but their relative performance will not be one of those graphs with the ECODIS because there's not enough campuses in Texas to make that equitable. And all of the dropout recovery schools have the rule of being 80% or more ECODIS. So you can't really, you can't have a school labeled for this accountability system that's even under 80%. So what they're doing for them instead is giving them credit for passing retesters. So for every kid, all five subjects, the denominator is the kids who retest, but for every one of them that passes or does better, they get points for. And so that's really helpful to them for retesting. They will have, though, the same domain three as the, as the high schools, because that's federal accountability. So it is likely that we will stay, that Brazos will stay in school improvement in domain three for a while because the one, one thing you have to do in domain three for comprehensive is you have to have a four-year graduation rate of 67% or better. Brazos's students, if they can graduate in four years, typically don't come to Brazos, right? So their students are usually continuing fifth and sixth year or struggling and finally realize they want to graduate and it takes them longer. So Brazos, in order to not be comprehensive, has to first meet the criteria, having a four-year graduation rate of 67% or better. We're getting there. We're in the 50s, but we're not going to all of a sudden say, oh, we got to get a whole bunch of 2023s over there to get that 67%. So we watch it and we understand why it's a metric, but we lean more into the retesters, passing students, graduating students, and, and those pieces. And now Brazos is focused on CCMR students out of Brazos. They have criteria that they have for the kids where, no, you're not just going to leave us, you're going to, we're going to work on you being CCMR ready. Early graduation is an incentive they want to give districts, but again, I highlighted that little phrase for you, that they're examining it, and in the first bullet you can see, given other requirements. They're not going to let us just decide what an early graduate is. They're going to tell us what they have to have to be an early graduate, to be considered successful to us. Okay, but this is kind of in response to business and the job market needing students to be out. So the things that affected our attendance, we are seeing many students at Waco University graduating early, not dropping out, working on a plan to graduate in December or February, whatever they need, if that's the need for the family. The overall rating methodology is the same, best of domain one or domain two, and then 30% is domain three. So that makes it easy for us to have a predictor there. And then the Senate Bill 1365 hadn't kicked in yet, but if you have three out of four domains as a D or an F, you can't have higher than a C, but mathematically, you probably don't have higher than a C. Because if you're getting growth in domain two, you're getting 50% of domain three. So I played around with the numbers. My pre-cal teacher would be so pleased. And I couldn't come up with a scenario really where I could see this happening, just the Fs might be problematic. So for example, Waco High University, that CCMR hit may pull them down into the D and F area in domain one. So we've been working on domain two and domain three. The things they can control are those STAR scores right now until we bounce back with the class of 2023. They'll do a what-if for us in all these areas. And that's it. When I get home, mhm. It's kind, it makes it easy to be a data nerd. I told Courtney before that it was like watching a good TV show, listening to the data because they're kids. And so when the numbers go up, I get very excited about that. I get, and when the dropout rate comes down, it, it, it's the movement I see, and it's going to take time for that to grow faster, but it, it makes me happy. So when something comes along that throws a wrench in, okay, this is what the state's going to do, but they're doing it to everybody, like the CCMR lift. So it's not just us, but we'll respond to it.
Are there any questions? We might have questions later.
That was a lot, and very well done, but I, I'd like to send the board some talking points from the Texas School Alliance on some of these changes and priorities for the legislative session, so you'll have those. And understand that this is, you know, there are things that we, we need to happen with the state throwing this on us so quickly. We need some time to adjust to this new system, and so I'll send those to you in a newsletter so you have them.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bow.
Madam President.
Yes.
I would just like to say thank you to all the schools around the district who've put on celebrations to celebrate Black History Month. I always like to pay homage to the black school board members who came before myself, starting with Reverend Robert Gilbert, Dr. Emma Louise Harrison, Mr. Billy Barrett, Mr. Sammy Smith, Mr. Alex Williams, Mr. Norman Manning, Mrs. Wanika Mohammed, Mrs. Kokwe Gibson, Mr. Keith Gilery, and myself, Jeremy Davis. So just thankful, thankful for the ones who paved the way and thank our community for, for the support.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for doing that. I remember doing that last year, too, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think we should give them a round of applause for their service. Okay, on that note, announcements?
Good evening, President Quarterwig, Dr. Kinkanen trustees. Thank you very much for that. As a, as a history major, I love hearing the rich history there. Trustee Davis, thank you. So first up on my list tonight, I have some important election dates relating to the, both general and special election that you all have called. Filing closed this past Friday for District Three and at-large place seven. We're still in a little bit of a waiting period with the opportunities to withdraw or to be a write-in candidate, but drawing for a place on the ballot for those two positions will be Monday, February 27th at 4:00 PM in this, on the 10th floor. Filing for candidates seeking to serve the final two years of the unexpired term for District Five closes at 5:00 PM on March 6th. Drawing for a place on the ballot for District Five will be Monday, March 13th at 4:00 PM, also on the 10th floor. So in addition to election items, I have a few other things on my list. Wednesday, March 1st, we would hope that you can join us in the evening at 6:00 PM at the Lee Lockwood Library and Museum to honor our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders that will be part of the superintendent scholar's celebration. I know our advanced academics team is hard at work on that special event that really not only recognizes what they've achieved, but it, it encourages them, as you heard a lot tonight, to, to go that extra mile and keep working. So again, that's ninth, 10th, and 11th graders that are going to be honored as a superintendent scholar on Wednesday, March 1st. Friday, March 3rd is student, is a student holiday and a staff in-service, and that leads us into spring break. Spring break is March 6th through 10th, and I can, I know we're, we're all busy working hard to get to that break and, and looking forward to it, and there's lots of other great activities going on at our campuses individually, but I know, I, I can feel the excitement for spring break already growing with the weather we had today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Can I mention March 6th is the last, the last date to file for the special election that's over spring break, but we will, Elizabeth is planning to be here, I think Monica is planning to be here to accept applications, so the, just wanted to mention that and thank them for, for taking care of that on that day.
Thank you.
Also want to say thank you again for a wonderful event today.
I appreciate it.
It's really well done and a lot of work, so.
It was a full-team effort, Core, O'Connell-Robertsen, our facilities folks. It was a great day. Thank you.
That's great. Well, thank you. I know that teachers and students are definitely ready for spring break. This time of year, everyone's kind of itching for that as the weather warms up, so. The board is going to go ahead into closed session at 8:54. This time pursuant of Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Chapter Code 551.074 and Government Code 551.071. There will be no action taken after closed session, so if you want to leave, we'll just end up closing.